Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, January 27, 2021. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll.
Garner.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Holmstead.
Here.
Heschel.
Here.
Salagi.
Here.
Carlin.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is Board and Administrative Reports, starting with the Board President's Report. I have a very short report tonight, but very happy to commend and congratulate two individuals who have been associated with our school district. Teresa Moka is an elementary art teacher at Carl Trager Elementary School. She's also part of the Arts Core group that includes University of Wisconsin Oshkosh and the Paint Arts Center in area school districts. She led a very interesting Saturday morning session on mindfulness and yoga, so I just want to commend and thank Teresa for her dedication to her colleagues as well as her students. And the second item involves the former principal at Carl Trager Elementary School. Some of you may remember Jana Cochran, who was with us for a number of years. Jana left the district a few years ago to be closer to home and is the current principal of North Greenville Elementary School. In a virtual meeting on Friday at the State Joint Convention of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Wisconsin Association of School Business Administrators, or officials, rather, and the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, Jana Cochran was recognized as the Wisconsin Elementary Principal of the Year. So we thank Jana for her many years of dedicated service to the students and families of our district and commend her on this well-deserved honor. With that, I will turn the next section of the reports over to Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you very much, Dr. Herzog. We do have some wonderful news to share with all of us this evening. Carl Trager Elementary students have been busy exploring their artistic talents and a virtual art show was developed to spotlight their efforts over this past semester. Jacob, a kindergartner at Shapiro STEM Academy, was recently granted a wish by the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Jacob now has a backyard where he can safely play with his brother and sister and one that lets his wheels go really fast. This has been his dream for many years, and Jacob is so happy to be living in a world where wishes do come true. Students in the lighted house school, the lighted schoolhouse after-school program at Webster Stanley Elementary School have been busy making blankets for the N.E.W. Posibilities Animal Rescue. We are pleased to announce that seven students within our district were honored as winners of the 19th Annual Essay Contest honoring the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. On the screen, you will see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time lately. Not listed are, of course, the multiple phone conversations related to COVID-19 and some of the planning that goes around with that. And with that, I will ask for Mr. Kemmer to come forward in order to give us a report related to COVID-19.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Each board meeting, I take a few minutes just to go over the status of COVID-19 in our committee. And that information is primarily based on the weekly report that's put out by the Winnebago County Health Department for school districts. So the county health department bases the report on case rate data over the previous two weeks. So the report I'm going to be referencing tonight covers the dates of January 6 through January 19. So that report comes out every Thursday. So this most recent report is based on last week, Thursday. There's a new report coming up tomorrow. So based on the information we received from the report last week, the case rate for the geographical boundary of our school district over that two-week period was 322, which puts us in the high range. If you remember several, probably a couple months ago now, we peaked when we were in critically high levels and it's been continuing to trend outward, which is good news. In addition to the Winnebago County case rate, we take a look at our own data and we calculate the case rates and the burden status for students in grade levels K through 2, 3 through 5, middle schools of 6 through 8, and then high school of 9 through 12. So based on the data from our school district for that same period of time, January 6 through January 19, the burden status for our middle school students was considered to be in the moderately high category. For our K-2 students and 3-5 students, it was in the high category, and for our high school students, it was in the very high category. So if you look at the chart that's connected to the metrics that we have on our website, you'll notice a trend, and that trend is that for our elementary level and our middle school levels, there's a little bit of fluctuation, but they're way significantly behind the case rate of the high school level, which has remained up in the very high category for quite a few weeks. So in addition to that report, there is an update on vaccinations. Everybody saw, but the state did put out some criteria for the 1B group, and that group, the good news is that it does include educators. The only drawback is that they are estimating that it's probably going to be around March 1st before they can start vaccinating educators. Now, it's really based on the supply of the vaccine for the state, so if we get more vaccine than anticipated, or if there are fewer people in each group of 65 and older who are unvaccinated than what they're anticipating, then that could be sooner than March 1st. However, the opposite happens where we get less of a supply of more people than they anticipated, and that 65 or older age group could be here on March 1st. So we're going to continue to work with our partners, which includes Aurora Healthcare, hometown pharmacy, the Winnebago County Health Department, and Helix to have a plan in place so as soon as we're able, we can hit the ground running with getting our staff vaccinated. We did find out that some of our people service staff, including our school psychologists, counselors, and social workers are eligible to be vaccinated in the 1B group. So we're in the process of getting those individuals that will break out. In addition to that, staff are encouraged to, continue to be encouraged to utilize the testing center, UW Oshkosh. They can go online. The website is listed in the board report to make appointments, and not only staff can access that, but also students and families. And then finally, just as a reminder, we do have our district dashboard that keeps track of COVID cases up and active on our website. So that dashboard now only looks at current cases of individuals who have COVID-19, not only students, but teachers, and it's done by school, but it also looks at the cumulative total of cases that we've had in the district since the start of the school year. So the most recent update, actually, this is not the most recent. It was updated on Monday, but the board report was written Friday, so the most recent update at the time of the writing of the board report, we had 525 active cases total since the start of the year's district and 4,439 quarantines. That concludes my board report.
Thank you, Mr. Kemmer. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Kemmer tonight? All right, well, thank you so much. Are there any committee reports from any of the board members tonight?
I have Facilities and Finance met on Thursday. We started by talking about Riff Road. We still own that property. And one of the thoughts is bringing this concept of having an athletic facility complex on that property. We've been approached by people over the years, so we think we would have some partnerships within the community to make that happen. Currently, as you guys know, we use UW Oshkosh for, we basically rent space from them for about $80,000 to $90,000 a year. And it has become more difficult for our district to get access to those facilities over the years. So we're thinking about maybe bringing that in-house. Mr. Niehans, we gave him the go-ahead to start this study. We had a study done, I think, a few years ago. I don't remember how many years.
2016.
Okay, so 2016. Maybe bringing that out and updating it, or just doing a whole new study. He's going to continue to work on that, and then when he has a plan, he's going to bring that to the full board for a workshop. The second item was the payment process of invoices for referendum projects. So you guys know we work with PMA, and they have the ability to record all of our invoices in one place and then give us a report that's really well-organized that we can drill into easier than if we do it, plus it overwhelms our business office, and that service is free. The only caveat is that it will not be part of the check run that we get for our board meetings for regular reasons, because we won't see those necessarily on that board Then we talked about the budget variance. We were off last month, mostly because we had higher expenses that were circling back to the money that we spent for COVID. And then we talked about two new staff positions, and the, we really like to have all those positions brought to us at once rather than these onesies-twosies, but this one in particular is for the IT physical, or yeah, IT physical security. We have grant money that has to be spent before the spring, and so that's why it's being brought forward right now. And they're asking for a salary position for, in IT, that is basically going to oversee all of our security. We have like 1,100, I think we have 1,100 security cameras. We need somebody that can take that on, and then as we grow our electronic security throughout the district, then that person will grow with that position. And then the other position was, oh, boy, hold on. There it is. Assistant Controller. So Sally Glander, who was in purchasing, she has resigned, and so Niehans has looked at the business office and how he'd like to restructure it. He is thinking more along the lines of succession. And so his idea is that instead of hiring another person just for purchasing, he would like to get an accountant with a four-year degree to become an assistant controller who can then grow into the roles, you know, throughout the business department. So it would be an additional cost between 15 and 30 grand to make that happen, and we agreed to move that forward. Okay, future agenda items that we have for Facilities and Finance is looking at the 2021 budget projections, staffing comparison discussion. We have to do an audit, so that will probably, we should do those in February, and then also discuss the money that we'll be receiving for the COVID Cares Act. And the next meeting will be February 18 at 8:30 in this building.
Thank you, Mrs. Garner. Are there any other board committee reports at this time? All right, seeing none then. The next agenda item for us is the non-agenda-related public forum. We would ask that when your name is called, you come to the microphone, state your name and address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, we ask that you indicate the group that you represent, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please. Please use public comments rather than a question-and-answer dialogue and state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel could lead to legal liability. The public forum is not the forum for raising specific personnel matters because there are different legal rights that are involved. We do welcome productive, polite, and civil comments, since our district has made a commitment to the civility project, which includes such items as pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, and take responsibility. If you do have specific concerns related to district personnel, you can pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct your concern to the appropriate administrator. So with that, we do have many people who are coming forward in addition to the many people who have sent emails, and I do welcome emails, and I do apologize at this point because I've not kept up with giving responses, but I have done my best to read everything that has come through. So at this time, we will begin with Ashley Cozel. Cozel, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, and I apologize for.
And Dr. Cozel, if you can call the number, that would be a great.
Oh, okay, the number. So Ashley, you're number one. You should probably have been, no, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ashley, and I am one of the many students at Oshkosh West High School, and I would like to try to go back to five days a week because the number of failings have increased dramatically, and high schoolers were at 13.8 failing one or more classes last year, and this year we are at 40.3%, which is a huge decline. And middle school last year was at 9.8%, and this year it was at 36.2%. Another thing is the mental health has gone down dramatically, and suicide rates have also dropped a lot, where in 2018, a study was taken, and it was at 10.7% in young adults. And this year, a study was taken August of 2020, and it went down to over 25% of young adults have tried to commit or thought about committing suicide. Students have also used the school counseling systems throughout, and when we went to fully virtual, that was taken away from them, so they didn't feel like they have a safe place to go to because some people have a harder time expressing their feelings over a call because they would rather not open up around parents and keep it like between them and the counselor. So when they were at home doing a Zoom call or sending an email wasn't as easy because it was somewhere where their parents could see it. The CDC did a study this year saying that personal learning doesn't play a major role in the community spread of COVID-19, and this was taken in 17 schools that have been in-person five days a week. And everywhere around us is also staying five days a week, like Amrow, the Lourdes School, which even though it is not a public school, they still have been five days a week and never stopped. There have also been other schools, and for high school, this is supposed to be the four years we will remember for the rest of our lives, but it was kind of stolen from us, so we lost out on everything we could have like dreamed of. And seniors lost their graduation last year, and we don't even know if seniors will get a graduation this year, which also makes me wonder, will I get a graduation when I go to graduate? Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Next would be number two, Grace.
Hi, my name is Grace, and I am also speaking on the matter of going back to five days a week in person.
Excuse me, could you give us your address as well, please?
She's a student, isn't she?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you a student?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
I was for my whole life in the Oshkosh Area School District along with my siblings. And going into virtual schooling was something different that I'd never experienced, but I didn't really mind it at first. I had never struggled in school, and I didn't think that virtual school was going to be a struggle for me. But as we entered into this year, and I started my freshman year, I began in-person two to three days a week and the rest were virtual, but then we ended up switching to fully virtual. And at first, like, I didn't mind it, I was doing okay, but soon enough, me being a three-day student for years on end, kind of went down the drain, and I ended up with lists of missing assignments, and I was the only passing with these, and I was overwhelmed, and I started to feel trapped, not being able to leave my house or be able to actually go to school where I would have teachers by my side to help me. And I'm a person that struggles with anxiety and depression on a daily basis, and I know many other people who do as well, and I can, I think I can speak for a lot of people when I say that virtual school really put like a damper on our mental health and made it even harder to get things done because we never got told by teachers that, you know, we weren't alone, or that there were other kids struggling, and that we shouldn't feel guilty about not having assignments done all the time. It was always just, we're here if you need us, but in reality, there were teachers who sometimes take hours on end to respond and make it harder to even receive the help we may need. And I think overall, like, going back to five days a week would help a lot of kids mentally end with school because being able to leave their house at least five days a week really helps them with their social life and just overall feeling more motivated because they have a reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number three is Sue. I'm sorry, C.
C, and my address is 1564 Villa Park.
Thank you.
I want to start off by expressing my concern with the inability, the inability of this board to come to a decision. The task to vote on what to do in regards to the matrix can't even be agreed upon by the majority of you. What I'm hearing, as well as the general public, is that some cannot make the decision, or some are not comfortable making the decision. If you cannot make a decision or are not prepared to make a decision, what are you doing setting your positions? It is your job to make a decision in behalf of our schools. You are in a position to make a decision. Did you forget that? Our children are still suffering at the inability of this group to make a decision. Why are our children being treated like they have done something wrong, like they committed a crime? Criminals are treated better than our children. Criminals are innocent until proven guilty. Our children, however, are guilty until you guys can make a decision. In essence, they are left to suffer for what crime? What crime have they committed? The crime for society not being moved to practice good hygiene? I would also like to ask for the reason why we can't go back to school five days. Is it due to a lack of staff, due to teachers not wanting to come back and teach in person, a lack of personal protective equipment? You must remember, all of us parents who don't work in the school district and are not sure where you and your board members are making your decisions from, because based on your history, your decision-making does not make much sense. I guess instead of using sources that work to your agenda, it would be best to actually ask the staff members of the principals, the assistant principals of our schools and see how they actually feel. After all, they are the people working in these very buildings day in and day out. Have any of you spent a day or a week in the life of a teacher to go through what they actually have to put up with, teaching online, teaching children who are quarantining, teaching kids that don't even show up for class? What seems to be a common theme here is a term that seems to not be understood by this board, transparency. It is not hard to release a statement and explain the reasons why we're not going back to school for five days. For example, if 40% are infected, then state so. I would ask that you please learn the meaning of the word transparency and communicate this effectively to your surrounding community. A good leader cares for their people. I'm not really sure that I see that here. When our people hurt, your people hurt. You should care. Our children are suffering, and yet decisions can't even be reached by seven individuals who are tasked to do this. Lastly, I'd like to remind each and every one of you that you are a part of the system for our children. You are a part of the system that keeps our children safe. Do any of you know what it's like to be in an abusive or neglected home? Do you know what, that some of our very own students in our very own school district have to deal with day in and day out? You understand the poverty level, you see those numbers. How do I know this? I know this became, I was that student who lived in that home. If you would like me to, we probably can go down to Family Services, and we can probably retrieve my juvenile records to show you that year after year, Family Services returned me back to my family. That's how I can speak on behalf of these children who are being forgotten, who no one seems to care about their mental health beyond just academia.
Thank you. Number four is Katie.
Katie Zarewski, 2695 Templeton Lane. Tonight, I wanted to share some numbers with the board. Six, Appleton is the sixth-largest school district in the state with close to 6,500 more students in Oshkosh. Their elementary recently turned to a five-day-a-week model. Seven, Waukesha is the seventh-largest school district with close to 3,300 more students than Oshkosh. Their elementary schools have been full-time since the start of school in September. This week, their 6th through 12th graders also went back to school full-time. In comparison, Oshkosh is the 11th-largest school district. 52,000, that's the amount of students in the Atlanta School District. Their elementary went back January 25th, their middle school on February 8th, and their high school on February 16th. They're back to four days a week, which means they've been virtual. Their school district is over five times the size of Oshkosh. I agree in some ways that we shouldn't be compared to smaller districts such as Amrow and Guanacotti, but there are similar-sized, if not larger, schools, Waukesha and Appleton that we can use, that can be used as models for how we transition back to full-time. I also want to test the notion that we have more challenges because we are a larger school district. This is not the fact, this is in fact conjecture. The complete opposite argument could finally be made, that we have more advantages, more funding, and more resources to operate safely and functionally in model number two. Five, that's the number of students my four-year-old had in this classroom at the start of the school year. While you allowed winter sports to be played under the guise of temperature checks and keeping bubbles small, my four-year-old was at home watching three videos a day, five days a week. Jacoby's classroom could have easily fallen under this exact same criteria. How can it possibly be consensible that you made a decision that a student is able to wrestle, yet my son can't be in a classroom wearing not only a mask, but also a shield during playtime? For the decision to be made to allow winter sports to occur brings me to one of two conclusions about the values of this administration. Either one, the threat of health and safety is so great that my son cannot attend school, yet you are willing to put at risk the health and safety of high school students, who we cannot forget are still children, or that you place a higher value on sports for high schoolers than you do a four-year-old receiving quality education. Twelve, that's how many days my middle schooler and kindergartner have had face-to-face instructions since March 13. Eleven, that's how many days my preschoolers had face-to-face instructions since March 13. Thirty-six point two, the percentage of middle schoolers in Oshkosh who had at least one or more apps on progress report number three. Forty-four three, the percentage of high schoolers in Oshkosh who had at least one or more apps on progress report number three. I personally did not hear these numbers brought up once on Monday night. Nineteen, that's the number of students that devastatingly committed suicide while their loss legs classrooms have remained virtual. The youngest was nine years old. Prompting these schools to reopen. You see, as much as we try to make it about the numbers, it isn't. It is so much more than that. While I've presented so many numbers tonight regarding my support for returning to a five-a-day-a-week model, nothing compares to the importance I place on not only the physical health, but the mental well-being of my children, Lucas, Aubrey, and Jacoby. And just as important is my right, the children, is the right my children have to equality education.
Could you finish in about 30 seconds, please?
The constitutional right my children have to in education. It's sad that we have to fight so hard for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lucas is number five.
Thanks for coming tonight, Lucas. Yeah. Lucas Zarowski. Hi, my name is Lucas Zarowski. I am from Carl Trager Middle School, and I am, and I am a sixth grader. I want to come to speak to tell you that we should have five days a week of school. Your decisions to have hybrid has affected my life in these ways. First, it's been hard to talk with my teachers. Second, it's been hard to know what I have to do since I only see my teacher 90 minutes a week. I also want five days a week because I want a good job in life. I want to be a lawyer. If I'm not being taught five days a week, I can't learn everything I need to know and suffer in life. I also miss my friends. I miss playing football and going to the Y after school. You might not be affected by two days of life, two days a week, but most kids are and are having a tough time. I am one of those kids. It bugs me that my friend Tyler gets to go to school five days a week, but I can't, and there's not that many COVID cases in his school. Please let us return to five days a week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Lucas. I'm terribly sorry. Number six, Tanya.
Tanya Harrison, 1923, Theravious Street. I very much understand the complexity of the situation, and I truly believe there is no right or clear answer to here. No district is winning in the circumstances, but sadly for Oshkosh, this has blown open a dam of weaknesses which has built up prior to COVID. Yes, there are risks and anxieties surrounding the school options, but there are also really great opportunities for these big challenges as well. We are not wrong to expect more from the district. And by district, I mean the board, and I mean the central administrators. Pre-COVID, central leadership in many regards isolated themselves. While they may not want to or believe that they have an us-versus-you relationship with school staff and families, that's exactly what they've created. You as a board have either knowingly or unknowingly, doesn't matter, reinforced that behavior. They can't, you can't, no one can make everyone happy. No one's expecting you to do that, but the district's repeated failure to have open and honest conversations and rapport with those you are responsible to serve has created a division, and it's wide. I'm a passionate supporter of public education, it's our community's future, but advocates and allies really need to be critical as well. We should be. We should be. We are pressing you to do your best, and right now you're not. Improving should always be the goal. That's the goal we want our kids to achieve. Make a mistake, you own it, you move on, and you do better the next time. Year after year, you have asked school staff to do more with less. While not easy, they have become nimble and flexible in this process. Students have indirectly been then asked to do the same. Seeing your inflexibility and inadequacies here compared to them is quite honestly an embarrassment. The lack of preparedness in the eAcademy platform this fall was a chaotic mess for students, teachers, and parents. Adding to insult at the same time when top administrators were given bonuses for their referendum work to come, money that could have been spent to bring back teachers early to collaborate and prepare for their virtual learning that was likely to happen, one misstep in miles of many. Your discord and dysfunction internally is also no secret. If you believe that the distractions hasn't contributed to where we are today, you are mistaken. You want control, but you're proving that you do not want to lead. You want to talk, but you do not want to decide on a tangible plan. You don't care, we don't care who's dropped the ball in the process. Someone needs to pick it up. Like anything, you can find data to support whatever you want to believe. What do you want? Where there is a will, there is a way, and we do not see your will right now. Your ultimate responsibility is the education of Oshkosh's students. Can you in good conscience say you're fulfilling that responsibility? The legacy of your board tenure will be that it ignited a generation of civil engagement and service. You are all really smart people.
Could you finish in about thirty seconds, please?
No longer is no action an option for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number seven is Tony.
My name's Tony Bird. I live at fifteen twenty-five Pierce Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. As a former teacher and administrator in the district, current parent and community member, I cannot sit on the bench anymore and watch what has transpired recently. Quite simply, we are better than this. The majority of my comments this evening will be directed in two ways, initially to you, Dr. Cartwright, but also to the board at large. On our district webpage, it states, "Dr. Cartwright, you are the primary professional advisor to the board, and you are responsible for the development, supervision, and operation of school programs and facilities." This district has lost its way, and it's directly geared towards a lack of decision-making and leadership. This begins when you took power out of our hands by leading the charge for a matrix to help make decisions. When all we know is that we cannot base our primary decisions on community factors, our schools would never be open. Monday night's meeting was a prime example where a lack of advisement allowed the board to go down a rabbit hole for several hours and yet accomplish nothing. I really thought I was watching an episode of Seinfeld. I got the impression that after the vote, several board members were not even sure what they had just voted for. I understand this confusion and would like to quote an example from Monday's meeting. You were specifically asked by Mrs. Olmstead, "What does this resolution mean to you?" Your response was, "In other words, effective February twenty-fifth, we do not have direction from the board on what model you have a preference towards, and I need guidance if you would like me to continue to make that decision on behalf of the district." Dr. Cartwright, you are the superintendent of this district. You make those decisions.
Just remember, we don't use specific names, Mr. Bird. Thank you.
My apologies. It was also stated that we do not have anything to refer towards to help guide us to make these decisions at this point in time. I would challenge all of you that yes, you do. You have a talented administrative staff, building principals, teachers, and medical professionals that can guide you every step of this process. In addition, it was asked by Dr. Herzog to clarify, "What does this resolution say or what does it mean?" It was stated that we are, we are at the leisure of the board. We will make work whatever you tell us to make work, but we need a two-week runway. Here lies the fundamental problem. We will make work whatever you tell us to work. A superintendent leads the operations of the school district. You bring your board resolutions, and they should vote them up or down. You and you alone lead them through this process. The board has clearly stated they do not feel comfortable making these decisions, and I understand that. Monday's meeting should tell you everything about the state of our district, and I'm asking you to lead and reevaluate your role with the board. One final thing, I ask that to the board that when you propose an amendment, it appears that there is a lack of communication or trust with the resolutions that are brought forward to you. You cannot make comments or add amendments to resolutions and say you don't want to make decisions. That is an extremely contradictory thing. I implore the board to hold your one employee accountable for their primary responsibility to advise you and oversee operations of the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Next is number eight, Kristi.
I am here today to share with the board and the community some-
Kristi, I'm sorry, your address, please.
Oh, sorry, thirty-four, sorry, late.
Name and address. Thank you.
Yep. I am here today to share with the board and the community some very concerning details that were uncovered during an open records request. The results of the surveys have been emailed to all the board members. The following are excerpts from the OASD Administration and Central Office Culture and Climate surveys from two thousand nineteen.
That, that's inappropriate for, for this forum. I had a legal opinion on that before we started tonight. Personnel matters are not the place, this is not the place to raise personnel matters. We have other ways of doing that. What are the other ways that she knows?
Tell her about the policies.
There's policy, I think it's ninety-one twenty on public complaints, requests, and comments. And you can also call four-two-four zero-one-six-zero, and ask to be directed to the appropriate administrator.
So I can re-summarize anything that has been brought to-
No, our attorney.
-the administration? So you want me to email you, which we've already done?
No, there's a process. If she has a complaint. So if you can, we have to get you the board policy so that you can just follow the rules. You just can't do it in public session, that's all.
Okay.
So there is, there is a way-
So someone's gonna email me that information, then?
I can do that, sure.
Okay.
If you-
Email you?
Yes.
You'll email me?
Yeah. I think, I think you probably have my email, while I don't have yours. Somebody here does. I'm sorry.
All right. I guess then that skips me and potentially the next person then.
All right. Well, thank you. I will make sure that you get that information as soon as you email me. Thank you, Kristi.
Yep.
Excuse me.
Do you want to vote? Do you want to raise your hand?
Can you have-
You can raise yours.
The behavior down the hall, are we, do we have anybody that can check on that screen?
There is, there are staff members down there.
Okay. I'll be right here, okay.
I want to go back to school five days a week because I will be able to learn better, learn better from my teacher. I, learning on computers from home is distracting and very hard. Plus, I like the routine or schedule. It gives me the right, right now, I only have two meetings a day and on virtual days. Both are an hour or less, and the time, that time I am expected, so I don't learn. I am feeling like I am failing fifth grade, this is why. I always want to see my friends. I also want to see my friends, which my mom says is very socializing.
Good.
Very good social, socialization, and I miss my teacher. Please let us go back to in-person all week.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Lucas.
Lucas, thank you, Lucas. Thank you for coming tonight.
Miss Olmstead, staff is reporting you're going to go back.
So Lucas was number ten.
I'm number nine.
Number nine? Okay, good. Kayla?
I'm Kayla, two-three-seven Sullivan Street. For the reasons that Christian couldn't talk, but looking into the multiple leadership-related issues, you've spent nearly seven hundred and still don't feel like, still don't have the results, plus for other reasons, leadership issues have waiting to be submitted. I'm, I am requesting a formal investigation by the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Directors into the job performance of individuals and request that, of the superintendent and request that she not receive any contract extensions or renewals.
Again, we're, we're not allowed to get into personnel matters of that nature at this forum.
I also feel that we, the board does not have our children's best interest. My son, who was just up here speaking, has ADHD. And I can tell you right now, I am so disappointed in all of this, all of it, because he is failing, he's gonna go into sisterhood and not know a thing. He can't do this virtual stuff, and I have to work full-time to support my family. My husband works full-time. This, he needs structure. He needs the five days a week, that is his structure, that is him. Without that, I have lost my son. It may not be the suicidal part, but it might as well be because of this. You guys say you have our kids at your best interest, but you don't. Because as you can tell, these kids are willing to mask up, they're willing to sanitize their hands, they're willing to do all of it. So who cares about the data right now? These kids need balance, they need structure, they need the environment to learn. Through a computer, you don't learn anything. You don't. And if you think that's what's best for our kids, then I really wonder, really wonder about this school district. And if it doesn't get changed soon, I will transfer him out. And I'm, I'm not the only parent that feels that way. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Number eleven is Beth Lang.
Beth Lang, nineteen fifty White Spandrive. I am here as an advocate for my kids, the youth of Oshkosh, and many teachers who want and need to be back in the classroom full-time. I have fifteen years of experience as an educator in and out of the classroom, and I am shocked at how the majority of the board thinks virtual and now the hybrid model is best for kids. I like to consider my situation a best-case scenario in the fact that homeschooling is number one priority at my house, and I have an educational background. Let me assure you, it's not working. In spring, we didn't have a choice. We had a new scary virus that we knew very little about, other than the fact that it was contagious and very dangerous. Fast forward to now, almost a year later, when so much has been learned about the virus and the precautions that could be taken to prevent spread, not to mention the numerous articles that spreading has not been linked to school, yet nothing has changed about getting our kids back into the classroom for five days. During summer of two thousand twenty, little was done to prepare for back to school, and according to several teachers, they didn't receive any guidance or communication until well into August. Getting us back into school two days a week when private schools and surrounding districts have been able to do it five days effectively just doesn't add up. Two days a week is forty percent of an education. When have we ever been okay with forty percent? Forty percent is failing, and it's unacceptable. We also have forty percent of Oshkosh High School students that failed one or more classes on their first semester report card. What sort of summer programming, if any, has been put into place to get these kids back on track for graduation? At Monday's meeting, a board member stated that several teachers said they are scared to go back to five days. I recognize this fear, and I empathize that this is a very difficult choice to make, but they do have a choice. What about the hundreds that do want to go back? Are their voices being heard? And if so, how? I think it's easy to sit here and pretend we know what's going on in the homes of our students, but we don't, and we won't know all the negative impacts this year has had for years to come. I am asking you to please put the kids back into school five days a week. People always have the choice to keep their kids home, but taking the option away is not what's best for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number twelve is Ruth.
My name is Ruth Stazak. I live on Prairiewood Drive. I watched the last two board meetings, and I am so disappointed and appalled in the lack of leadership of this school board. If it wasn't obvious before, it's become abundantly obvious to the community that none of you are qualified to make a decision. I was embarrassed watching the last two meetings, talking in a circle for three hours, and still can't come to a decision, which is your job. Multiple board members didn't even know what they were voting on. Half of you seemed confused. Do you have any idea what that looks like to the community that you serve? There was so much contradiction on Monday, first saying we can't compare ourselves to schools, then you were comparing us to other schools in the district. Which one is it? Last week, you received recommendations from administration and teachers and principals to go forward beyond the matrix, and you completely ignored that. But then you say you don't want to make a decision, and you want administration to make a decision. They gave you a recommendation, and you turned it down. You talk about safety. Let's talk about COVID. Do you know that more children die from influenza every single day than COVID? One in two hundred thousand chance of dying from influenza in school-aged children, but a one in one-point-one million chance of dying of COVID-nineteen in children. More children and adults die from influenza every single day during flu season. So again, what is your definition of safety in regards to getting our kids the education they deserve and the education that we pay for? I think you are all so focused on COVID that you are failing to see the bigger picture here. I've heard numerous times on Monday, members that you don't know how to make a decision. For those people, you need to resign today. You have had eleven months to gain knowledge, just like everyone else in the country. The city of Oshkosh has resumed normal day-to-day operations with safety measures in place, and we are doing just fine. We have numerous, numerous measures to prevent the spread of COVID and other diseases. We have more than one in place so that if someone doesn't have a mask on in school or vice versa, the measures, the other safety measures still provide a safety blanket. Let's talk more numbers. How about the failing rates you presented last week? Forty percent of high schoolers and thirty-five percent of middle schoolers. How is this not affecting your decision right now? Do you think that's safe? This directly affects our community, and we have set the bar so low throughout all this that I would bet the failure rate is closer to fifty percent. You are directly responsible right now for what is going, what our city is going to look like over the next five to ten years. This is so much bigger than COVID. The decisions you are or are not making affect more than what is going on during this pandemic. Low attendance or a failing grade can identify future dropouts, and in some cases, in as early as sixth grade. In sixth grade, when engagement is less than eighty percent of the time, it is directly related to them dropping out of school in as early as sixth grade. I have plenty of studies to show you guys on this. We already know that certain predictors, such as being poor, minority, or single mother households, have a higher dropout rate. These kids don't even stand a chance right now. You are supposed to be representing our kids and doing what is best for them, yet you have single-handedly kicked them while they are already on the ground. Many, many community members are getting involved right now. They're getting educated, and I assure you, we will not stop until we have a competent board and administration team. We voted you in, we will definitely remember what you say and how you behave right now when it's time to vote again.
Thank you very much. Number thirteen is Alyssa.
Hi, Alyssa Anderson.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Alyssa Anderson, sixteen sixty Chatham Drive. Thank you for your time and attention tonight. I am a parent of a kindergartner who goes to Carl Trager. I'm here to ask you to please vote to send my daughter back to school five days a week in person. I'm here to advocate for my child and give you my unique perspective. My husband and I both work full-time. We have two children, ages four and six. It has been a difficult school year, to say the least. I won't focus on all of our struggles we faced accommodating virtual learning, the decreased quality of family time, the worsening of our mental health. It has been hard. Virtual learning, hybrid learning is not feasible long-term. I won't focus on all the research that supports children returning to the classroom safely now. I would like to instead show you a project that my daughter was assigned this week. It's her one-hundredth day of school project. This is a jar of one hundred coins that she counted all by herself. Now, this next bit wasn't part of her assignment, but I'd like to bring to your attention how many actual days she's been in the classroom physically with her teacher and friends. She's in hybrid Group A. She's in hybrid Group A, and I'm going to count it out. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. Let that sink in. 13 days out of 100. She's only been to her physical classroom 13 times so far this entire school year. People may think, oh, it's temporary. Oh, she'll be fine and catch up. No. As a kindergartner, this unprecedented school year has been my daughter's first impression of all-day school. She can't get that back. She tells me she doesn't like learning at home because it's so boring, Mama. She hates working on her Chromebook for more than a few minutes at a time. I think we can all agree that children get the best quality education in person with professional educators, not virtual at home. Not with me, I'm not enough. So many children are failing. If other parents prefer to keep their kids home, understandable. They had the option of e-Academy. I haven't been offered a choice. In closing, I'd like to stress, education is essential. My daughter deserves the best education possible. We can get kids back to school safely if we work together. I'm not saying it'll be easy. It'll be complicated and difficult. But hey, that's what you've asked parents, students, and teachers to do all school year so far. Figure it out, do your best. Now it's your turn. I understand you're all trying to do what's right and keep safety first. You don't want to rush, but please, I encourage you to make a decision. Give some direction to administration. Be the leaders you were elected to be. Time's running out for this school year. Please vote to send children back to school five days a week in person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ashley is number 14.
A little shorter than most, so sorry. My name is Ashley Trinkow, 846 West 11th Ave. My son is in kindergarten, he has special needs, and he has an IP. He's behind socially. I'm not understanding how he's ever supposed to get ahead or work on his social skills if he cannot be in school. When the kids were all virtual, he was able to go for two hours a day, every day. Even when he was going for those two hours a day, I never really understood why. From what I gathered, he did work on his Chromebook and worked with the special ed teacher, again, with no other student interaction. What is the point of that? I sent him anyways because I was grateful for any time he had in school with actual teachers and not just me or his dad struggling to teach him. That also seems to be with the cases for other students who are allowed to go in person. I remember a previous meeting where a parent stated that a high school student went to get extra help, and it sounded like it was basically a study hall where students were glued to their Chromebooks and there just happened to be staff available to answer questions. Again, what is the point? I have a compromised immune system and I'm on medication that lowers it even more. I work in an office setting, five days a week, in the office, not from home. I work with many high school and college students from within our community from many different schools. I would say that on a day-to-day basis, I work with about 100 people in office. It's not always the same 100 people, changes every day. We wear masks, we social distance when we can. Do we have positive cases? Absolutely. But we did not shut down the whole office for months on end. We have adapted and changed the way that we do things. Why can the district not do that also? I cannot live in fear of COVID forever. It's never going to go away. I'm just kind of wondering when the board's going to realize this. I was dumbfounded when I watched the meeting on Monday, and this is what inspired me to come here tonight. I cannot believe the board is still asking the same questions since March. The board has had almost a year to ask these questions and come up with solutions. I cannot believe some of the board members did not know that they were supposed to vote on moving to Model 2 on Monday, when the meeting agenda sent to all of us parents literally stated, "Vote to move beyond the matrix and approve the move to Model 2." If the board does not think that they're the ones who should be making this decision, then who's supposed to? The board had no issue, issue with making the decision to close 10 months ago. The CDC released new data stating that K through 12 schools can be opened safely, and schools are not the super-spreaders that they were thought to be. Why is it okay to play contact sports but not okay for our kids to sit four to six feet apart in a classroom setting? I understand wanting to get teachers vaccinated, but we do not have a definite date of that either, only ballpark. By the time the board decides that they are capable of making these decisions, we'll be on summer break, and we'll be right back here in the fall, still going around in circles. So please consider the feelings of the people speaking here tonight and do the right thing to get, to get our kids back in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Wendy, number 15.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Gurs, and I live at 1849 North Point Street. I would first like to say thank you. I appreciate all that you do. I have three children. My two younger ones are a senior and a freshman at Oshkosh North. The teachers and the staff have been amazing and worked tirelessly for our children. I've always been a positive person and looked at the good in every situation. I can't do that anymore in regards to virtual learning. My freshman son recently said to me, "Mom, you keep telling me to hang in there and things will get better," and they're not. I don't believe you anymore. This broke my heart. My senior daughter has lost so much. Many friends and classmates graduated early. The isolation has been devastating, not to mention lower grades, frustration, tears, and heartbreak. This pandemic has done so much damage to their education, their mental health, social lives, friendships, personalities, and overall well-being. They have changed. They're not the happy-go-lucky kids they once were. The smiles and the laughter have been missing. It's time to make a change. It's time to give them hope. I understand the hesitation and the concern to approve going back to five days a week. However, sometimes difficult decisions must be made. It's imperative that our children go back to the classroom and back to the schools five days a week. Doing nothing is not okay. So much damage has been done, and it is going to take a long time to recover, to reconnect, and to move forward. Please think of the thousands of children and students that need to be in school, while you are also considering all of the ones that will be tested positive and are quarantined. We have to think about all of the students. Your job is to think about all of the students. I've talked to many, many parents, students, families, and teachers. Students are failing. Students have lost the desire to learn and the desire to believe in anything good. Students are doing things that they shouldn't be doing instead of doing their schoolwork. Students are isolated, students are depressed, students are in tears daily, and parents and families. Students are giving up. Do you know how many high school students, including my own, eat lunch alone in their cars? That is heartbreaking to me. Why is there not more discussion on these aspects? You have to consider these aspects as importantly as you consider the virus aspect. We have to find hope. We have to have hope, and we have to give hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Number 16 is Stephanie.
Hello, Stephanie from 4447 Harbor Village Drive, and I'm actually in Amro. So here are a couple of definitions to ponder. Hero. A hero is a person who is admired or idolized for courage, outstanding achievements, or noble qualities, which include a unique understanding for others' needs. Great bravery. Heroes act voluntarily for the service of others who are in need, whether it is an individual, a group, or a community. Heroes recognize and accept potential risk or sacrifice by taking heroic actions. By contrast, a villain is a person or persons or thing responsible for specific trouble, harm, or damage. Self-serving. One blamed and for a particular difficulty placed on others. Which definition do you believe is the perception of the school board in regards to the students in our current district? The students in which you are supposed to represent? You know and have admitted that kids are better off in school five days a week. What is driving your decisions? What is hanging over your heads? I personally know there are many staff who would love to be the hero for their students, if you allow them to be. Here's a testimonial from a student who couldn't be here tonight. She's an eighth grader at Merrill. I quote, "Due to feeling like a failure and not being able to be in a classroom learning, which is how I learn best, I was diagnosed with severe depression and put on medication for the first time in my life," end quote. I can say this with certainty, that she is one of many suffering in this district. Please be her hero. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Number 17 is Megan.
Hi, my name is Megan James. This is my son Ben.
Hi, Ben.
Address 1938 Anchorage Court. Ben is a first grader at Emmeline Cook and would like to tell you why he wants to go to school five days a week.
I think playing on the computer is very boring and not fun. I like in-person better. I like reading, writing, and I love math and learning. My friends and I like recess. Please let us do school every day, except Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you very much for coming. That was very nice. Thank you.
I have a hard time sitting by and watching all the other school districts in this county go to school while my son learns through a computer with distractions all over the place. The current matrix will never allow our kids to succeed. It is outdated and needs to go away altogether. While it was great to develop it as something concrete to fall back on in July, this pandemic has evolved, and our guidelines should as well. We don't need one giant rule for an entire district to follow. I think you should give individual schools the ability to make the calls that will best serve the people within their walls. The other districts are making it work. So what are their, what do their guidelines look like? We need to figure out what their protocols are, because quite frankly, they are doing it better. Their kids are getting a superior in-person education. We say we are following the science, but we are not. Countless studies have come out showing how little children spread the virus and how much of a mental health toll virtual learning is taking. There have been updated quarantine guidelines that could make our jobs a lot easier. Why are we not listening to and acting on this information? Lastly, it appears that no one is concerned with how far behind these kids will be and the great task of our hard-working teachers getting the students back on the same level. Being mostly out of the classroom for nearly a year has resulted in a 40% failure rate. But none of this is new information to any of you, so why are we not doing better by our students? Our community is looking to you. Our kids need to be the priority. I know that you don't want to make this decision, but you were elected to do just that. I don't argue that this is hard. No one saw this coming. But staying at status quo is just not an option. It's time to rise to the challenge. There will be bumps along the way, but we can do it safely, and it needs to be done soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Number 18, Molly and daughter, I believe.
Okay, I think I'm 18 and 18A. They gave me permission to speak on both of my children tonight. Who happen to be in institutions across the Fox Valley with hundreds of kids going in and out of them tonight. So I promised them that I would read this on their behalf. I'll start with Sydney. My name is Sydney Boots. I would like to speak my thoughts regarding in-person learning five days a week. I apologize for my absence, as I wish to be at the meeting in person, but I have danced tonight. I am a junior this year at Oshkosh West, and this school year has been all but easy. Throughout the 2021 school year, the lives of students and teachers alike have been nothing but a huge question mark. From switching models from hybrid to virtual, then tentatively hybrid, and then back to virtual, and then back to hybrid, it has been an inconsistent mess. When we decided to go back in September after a five-day in-person school, I remember not knowing how I was going to keep going. I remember forcing myself into a routine to stay motivated and on top of things, but even while doing that, every single day felt the same. Nothing exciting, fun, social, just the same thing over and over again. Thankfully, I dance at Julie's Touch of Silver, which is the only thing that has kept me motivated and pushed me to excel, to be truly great, unlike attempting to learn through a screen. If it were not for Julie's understanding of the severe mental health issues your decisions have left students with, and her understanding that dance and exercise are essential, I do not know what I would have done. During this whole time, I have not been sick or had to quarantine, and I have been taking and teaching classes there five days a week consistently. Thankfully, Julie, my coach, understands that dance is essential, not only to our physical health, but also our mental health. Unfortunately, I can't say the same about our district, which is why I ask you to please consider sending us back to school full-time. School is essential, learning is essential, hard work, dedication are essential. I have been always told by all, I have been told to always give 110% effort, which I have done and continue to do, and she does. But the hybrid learning model doesn't match up to that. This learning model shows us that we only have to maybe give 40%. That is not okay. Personally, my motivators teach me to work harder every day and to go to an esteemed college, but most students are not like me. They are not as motivated. On our virtual days, I have seen and heard of students in my classes putting in zero work, and when they are supposed to be doing school, they are out driving around, shopping, or sitting on TikTok. Hybrid learning is not providing any good towards our future careers or lives. A future workplace would not be okay with its employees only getting, putting in 40%, which is why I would like to reemphasize my main point. School learning, knowledge, and a strong work ethic are all essential in building a strong future for our nation and for student lives. Keeping us home for 60% of the week is not helping us reach our full potential. It is holding us back from the many great things that our generation can do. It is teaching us that 40% effort is okay. It's not. I ask that you please consider this and put 110% effort into your decision rather than 40. Okay. Hi, my name is Elena. I will not be attending this meeting due to my volleyball practice tonight. I have been playing volleyball since the beginning of December. I have had multiple tournaments and haven't gotten sick, nor have my teammates. I have also been going to the gymnastics center five hours a week. I also have not gotten sick, nor have my teammates. I think it is crazy that I also played soccer all summer long and did not get sick there either. The fact that we cannot go to school five days a week is unacceptable. Online learning for many kids is a big struggle, including me. I'm going to tell you some things I struggle with. I struggle with getting up at 9:30 in the morning, doing two hours of school, and being done. My husband and I are not home, we are both at work. Then for the rest of the day, I am doing absolutely nothing. I also struggle with the fact that I am in my pajamas until it's time for me to go to one of my physical activities. I have learned basically nothing due to online learning. I am always distracted by something at my house causing me to learn nothing. The first day of school, when we got to go back on January 11th, I learned more than I have this whole year on that one day. I was not distracted, I got to socialize, and I got to be in in-person school. The kids that feel uncomfortable going back five days a week can join the e-Academy program, which is set up for this exact reason. I am very disappointed that this school district is the only one that is not going back five days a week. They can manage, other school districts can manage to do it, but we can't. The thing is, most kids haven't even been doing their online work, and failing most of their classes shows how this is affecting most kids. Many kids have switched schools due to decisions that aren't helping anyone get better. This is unacceptable. As a school board, you're supposed to be leaders, leaders meeting, helping kids get smarter and better, not having kids do no work and fail their classes. I am currently enrolled at another school for next year. I am a people person who always needs to be socializing. For kids like me, this type of learning is very difficult. For me, motivating myself is not a struggle, but for others it is. I have friends who stay up until 4 o'clock in the morning and wake up at noon. That is not right. I have been always told by my coaches and parents to give it your all in everything you do, but with this learning, it is almost impossible to keep going and give it your all. I am trying to tell you that what is happening right now is unacceptable. I thank you for your time, school board, and hope you consider my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you very much, Molly. And Sydney and Elena.
Yes.
Next is Stacy Potter, number 19.
Good evening.
Evening.
Stacy Potter, 3754 Leonard Point Road. We've talked a lot about comparing Oshkosh School District to other schools in the area who've been in person, and I know that's not our favorite topic of conversation. There's a lot of differences, and that's valid. I think one of the main differences is that those schools that are in session, I know for sure at least Amro and Berlin, from staff that works there as well as superintendent, said that they entered into the school year discussion with one premise. Our kids belong in school. How do we make that happen with the least amount of risk? It would seem that the Oshkosh Area School District's question was different. It would seem that the Oshkosh area school district's question was different. It was how do we mitigate as much risk as possible before we choose to send our kids to school? Simple semantics, but it's created what we're dealing with today, which is a board that is so afraid to make a wrong decision is so concerned about looking at every data piece and every recommendation, which are just recommendations, and interpreting through the most conservative lens possible. It's crippling you and it's crippling our district. Those of us asking for five days in-person school, we are not expecting the board, the district, or the schools to make it risk-free for our children. We expect you guys to continue to make progress with a clear goal of getting and keeping our children in this class. Hybrid is a step in the right direction, and I'm grateful for the two days my kids get in class with their teacher, but it's a subpar academic model. Having only two instructional days of learning per week cannot be where we land and just say, let's see how this goes. Principals told you at the meeting last week, which by the way, was one of the best board meetings I've watched, thank you for inviting their input, it's long overdue, they told you they were ready. They told you where they were ready. It's going to be hard. It's going to be challenging. They also told you how they were going to meet these challenges. Those are the people that should be making this decision. Why are you not listening to them? They told you they're ready, and there may be some principals at schools who don't feel as ready. How are we supporting them? How are we going to let them, or we should be letting them, make these decisions? The board needs to vote yes to five-day in-person school, and you need to set a date, not with thirty-five different caveats, just a yes that says we have confidence in our schools and our leaders to do what needs to be done to serve the students. We have the talent and the skills at the school level to get the job done. You just need to give them the chance. The district office needs to ask principals, what do you need? How can we support you? And then you just need to cheer them on. Follow through on efforts to recruit more subs. Has there been any progress with that? We've heard great ideas. Has there been any progress? Ask the teachers and the principals how to spend that additional COVID funding. Get their input in that. I still do not understand why we don't have cameras in the classroom. I feel like eighty percent of the concerns that you guys understandably asked, and you asked some great questions at that last board meeting. Get cameras in the classroom. I know that's not a state legal issue because Whitefish Bay School District has that happening. That takes care of kids who have to quarantine. It's a seamless transition to home for the fourteen days. That takes care of children who want to remain virtual because they're scared.
I'm sorry, could you finish in about thirty seconds?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then by April, the conversation should be, how do we look at next year and make it better? Because we just cannot withstand another year of this indecision, this miscommunication, and the nonexistent leadership at the superintendent and the board level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is number twenty, Cory. Cory Patrick.
Hi, I'm Cory, one-two-eight-five Old Apple Lane. I am number twenty, and I had this thing written out that I was going to read, and I practiced for my three minutes. And honestly, I sort of think like, what's the point? Because I'm not sure that you're listening. Maybe you're listening to what you want to hear. I don't, I don't know. So I come before you and I'm going to do a really hard thing. I am not a public speaker. I'm going to rip this up and say, okay, I'm a parent, I'm a mom. I have got kids, you know, ages twenty-one down to twelve. I've been, I've been through this before. I'm at a loss of words. I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in the decisions that have been made here. And so I'm going to go on a limb and just say, listen, I, I am doing a really hard thing. Right now, you've got twenty-eight people today who stood up and are doing really hard things by just coming in here and giving of themselves and saying, this is what I believe in, this is what I think is true, this is what I think is right for my kid. And before I left tonight, I said to my kids, they're like, well, where are you going now? And I was like, listen, I have told you, I have taught you, I have trained you to do the right thing always. And what that means is like, it's standing up when something's hard. It's standing up and running to something and saying, I believe in this, and therefore I can't complain in it, because if I complain and do nothing, nothing's accomplished. So I'm going to stand, I'm going to stand firm, and I'm going to do something about this. So this is not easy for me. This is not fun. I don't like this. You don't like this, but I implore you, even though you're in a spot that you don't want to be in probably, this is hard. Let me tell you a story. Let me tell you a story. I don't, has anybody heard about the buffalo, the buffalo story? So imagine with me, it's the plains without west, right? And you've got buffalo roaming, and you've got cattle roaming, and all of a sudden a storm comes in, and you see the dark clouds and, and it's like rumbling and it's really loud and it's, it's kind of scary and you don't know what to do. Well, guess what the buffalo do? What do you think the buffalo do? The buffalo start running towards the storm. Is that the easiest thing to do? Is it the safest thing to do? Nope. But they know that if they go towards a storm, if they could charge through the storm, they're going to get to the other side quicker. What do the cattle do? The cattle are grazing, they're just taking their good old time, they're not paying attention to much of anything because they're cattle. The cattle run from it. They run from the hard thing because it's easier to do. So they get stuck in the storm, and they're there longer. So I implore you, run towards the storm. Let's do the right thing for our kids. Let's stand up for these parents who are putting their effort and their time into standing up here and doing the right thing for their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Number twenty-one is Cory Youngworth. Or Carrie, is it Carrie or Cory? I'm sorry.
Carrie.
Carrie, thank you.
Carrie Youngworth, Ninth Avenue, Oshkosh. On behalf of Save Oshkosh Schools and for reasons that we are not allowed to share tonight, we are requesting a formal investigation into the job performance of the Executive Director of Human Resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Number twenty-two is Sarah.
Sarah Nowey, address nineteen seventeen Timberline Drive in Oshkosh. I am here today to represent, representing the group Save Oshkosh Schools or SLS. Two months ago, this group didn't even exist. We are now nearly fifteen hundred members strong, and we can continue to grow daily. We represent the Oshkosh area community that this group continues to ignore. I say this to the elected officials in this group, you should be ashamed of your actions on Monday during the meeting, not because you didn't vote the way we wanted, but because you should have been having those type of discussions at the very latest before summer even began. And it should be a collaborative effort with the principals and with the teachers. Now we're headed into February, nearly a year of limited learning for our students, and you've kicked the can down the road again. You need to be asking why you feel so ill-prepared to make the necessary decisions. Where was your guidance supposed to be coming from? Monday's three-hour meeting was a waste, and you didn't put, didn't put any of you in a good light. Instead of making a game plan, you chose to stick your heads in the sand and look the other way and arbitrarily pick another date down the road. We have been begging through emails, phone calls, and requests for meetings to be heard. We've heard conflicting stories, who's making the decisions? You threw the decision-making back to your employee and looked the other way. She works for you. She isn't doing her job. She should be removed. On Monday, we delivered three hundred and twenty-eight signatures from the Oshkosh community demanding we go back to five days a week in-person school immediately. I'm here tonight to add another hundred and two signatures for a total of four hundred and thirty. The reason Monday night was such an embarrassment is because you have members here who are apparently not here to do the job they were elected to do. You should be the most informed members of our district, and yet when we ask questions, you have no idea what's going on, or worse, you pretend not to. We have to pay to find out information, and yet we still don't have our answers. We have countless open records requests just waiting, and you haven't filled the first one that we paid seven hundred dollars for. You have allowed a grossly overpaid employee, someone you hired, to operate as a self-proclaimed expert. Our school district has been rapidly degrading since that decision was made. Now after Monday's debacle, your action-making, that person looks sane. Of course, this is probably all by design, knowing that we are collecting signatures on petitions. It only adds dysfunction to this group. The reason we are in this mess in the first place is because your superintendent refused to plan or gather actual experts to assist. Our healthcare members have been offering to assist you with mitigating guidance. For that reason, I am here to deliver three hundred and sixty-two signatures asking for you to remove the superintendent immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, number twenty-three, Rebecca.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Renner, and my address is eighteen ninety-Sunkiss Road.
Thank you.
First of all, I am a healthcare professional with one of the organizations, one of the two that's in our community, and am a nurse practitioner in primary care. My background actually is in emergency medicine and ICU, and I've also been a paramedic and done flight nursing. I have seen some of the worst and the best things of our community in my experience, and what I am here today to do is implore you to consider going back and definitely going back to five days a week in person. My children are sixteen, sorry, excuse me, a junior at Oshkosh West High School and fourteen, a freshman at Oshkosh West High School. So my son, it's his first year in high school, and as we all know, it's supposed to be like the best years of your life, and this has been less than that. One of the things that I wanted to mention was in President Biden's inaugural address, he vowed to teach our children in safe schools, and I believe that means that we need to go back to in-person five days a week. The federal health officials also weighed in, saying that returning children to in-person schooling is, is important because of the evidence now indicating that in-person instruction can be carried out safely as long as mask-wearing, social distancing, and hand sanitizing policies are in place. Now, as a healthcare professional, I would say that we should have been doing most of that already by, you know, avoiding other diseases. And as previously mentioned, influenza is actually also a very deadly virus that we have, you know, now vaccines for and stuff, and we are getting the COVID vaccine, and I am so proud of our healthcare professionals in our community, and I implore that this board and Dr. Cartwright, you guys link into that resource, because these are healthcare professionals that know what they're talking about. And if I am able to go and do my job, I work four days a week, but four days a week, and my husband goes five days a week, then everyone else in our community can as well. So the other thing I want you to consider is that my daughter, as a junior, drives, and most of these students that are that age are out socializing, and they're not social distancing, and they're not hand sanitizing, and they're sharing beverages, and they're going to work. And I feel like the structure of the school day actually would limit the spread and help us reduce our numbers. In regards to the CDC's recommendation, they also on their website state that it is critical for schools to open as safely and as quickly as possible to in-person learning, to enable these students to learn and flourish as our up-and-coming members of society. So please do what you can to get them back to in-person learning. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next is number twenty-four, Chris Wright.
I guess I'm a little taller. So my name is Chris Wright. I live at fourteen twenty-five Russet Lane, and the group I'm here to support is the kids and Chris Wright for Oshkosh School Board. I'm here because I feel like this district's in a really bad spot in a lot of different ways. I mean, I have kids, three kids, kids that have had, two kids that are now in a different school, and many other kids that have left the district. It's clear, all the data states, especially after that CDC letter today, that kids can safely be in school. This is a crisis right now. What is this going to look like next year? People think these kids are just going to come back to Oshkosh School District? I'm telling you, they're not. A lot of the families I'm talking to are not going to come back unless drastic changes are made and unless if we return to five-day-a-week in-person school. And what, we've lost, what? I don't have the exact numbers. I can't wait to see them. I just saw a Facebook post ten minutes ago where another kid left and went to Amro. Do we want to lose the number of kids that's equal to Oakwood, to Oakwood School? How is that going to affect our building planning? How is that going to affect how we move forward? We want to lose good, that many good kids and that many good families out of this school district? That's crazy. Not to mention, forty percent of our kids on average are failing a class right now, and mental health issues are through the roof. This is what this current model has produced. Can five days a week produce any worse than that? Can five days a week in-person produce any worse than four kids, forty percent of our kids getting an F? Five hundred families leaving the, leaving the district? Mental health issues that are through the roof? If it can, you better explain that, because everyone is watching, and everyone is engaged, and leaders lead in times of crisis, and boards lead in time of crisis, and everyone in this room will be remembered by how they lead in this time of crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Number twenty-five is Amy.
My name is Amy Schwab. I live at thirty-nine fifty-five Prairie Court. I just, I have a quick couple of things. That gentleman talked about leaving the school district. We were there in November. Note, Amro, Winnicott, and Nina, a lot of those places weren't even willing to take students until the first of the year. You guys open? Well, we'll see what happens, because like, we're this close. We checked out the private schools and everything, so I want you guys like, and everybody knows is there too. I wanted to drive my kids to Nina, you know? I mean, so, okay, then the next question I mentioned is, not asked in there. So we have these students that get COVID, and you guys last week said, okay, if we have four kids, then all four of those kids get quarantined. There's nine kids around them, those ain't get quarantined. Why are we quarantining them? How many of those kids have come up with a positive test that we're around them? These masks are supposed to work, right? Okay, now get started. I'm very concerned about Oshkosh School District. I feel all ages should be equally considered going back to five days a week, not just elementary first and whatever. You've got to figure it out. But I'm going to focus on high school. My children at this time have spent half, or wait, spent less than half of the high school, more than half of their high school career, learning from home. With that being, you know, and we know they're not getting the education they'd be getting if they were in school. How do you feel, I mean, with these kids? How are they going to go, you know, after, what kind of education are they going to get? How are they going to be prepared in the real world emotionally, maturity, their maturity level? They're not even going to know how to go out and work, because they're not going to be able to work with older people, you know? The adults that are out there now, let alone go to college. How are, you know, how are they even going to get into a college? Because you guys don't want to allow them in school. They're not getting the education everybody else is getting. We can have sports. Why can we have sports but no, no school? Why? On top of that, we can't, we can't have the clubs either. You know, my kids are big into Skills USA. What a wonderful program that is. Very wonderful. It's, it's more important than sports. It gives kids more than what sports does. We don't have that. They can't go to ski club. I mean, I know that's more like a sport, but we can't even have ski club. There's, they're outside, you know? What's, you know, but we can wrestle, but we can't shake hands. We can wrestle on the floor, but we can't shake hands. You know, you guys, we all sit here and keep talking about failing grades. We're measuring everything on failing grades. Why, why aren't we looking at their actual grade point average? You know, I know A and B students, always A and Bs, mostly As. They're now getting As, Bs, and Cs. We, we're not even measuring that. We're only measuring the failing rates.
Could you wind up in about thirty seconds, please?
Yep. Safety measures. Here's a safety measure, because I know I've seen teachers in bars, but then they don't want to work. That's hypocritical, and I don't approve of that, but whatever. Put this piece of tape right there in front of my students that I, this is my six-foot distance, right there. Put that piece of tape down. As a teacher, I know I can't cross that line. Out in the hallway, they say, you know, fifteen to thirty minutes to pass it on. If those kids are just walking down the hallway, I'm wearing a mask, they're wearing a mask, shouldn't be an issue. If those kids are just walking down the hallway, I'm wearing a mask, they're wearing a mask, shouldn't be an issue. Simple. If there's people that don't want to go to school, let them sit at home and learn virtual. Live Zoom while the rest of the kids are in school. Fantastic. That reduces your attendance. The other thing is I am very disappointed, you guys. Nobody wants to make a decision. That's what you guys are here for. You guys gotta do something. And if you don't, I ask you, please resign and give it to somebody else that's willing to make a decision. I would rather have somebody against me and willing to make that decision than sit here and have all us families and our children be just pushed around and basically almost abused because nobody wants to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 25, Robert.
25 or 26?
I'm sorry, 26. You're correct.
Thank you. Quite short here, okay. Just a little title on my little messages I wrote here. Are we thinking clearly?
Mr. Rigoni, you have to state your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Rigoni, 44556 Belle Haven Lane.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are we thinking clearly? The Centers for Disease Control, the CDC, is the most admired, scientific, and public health agency in the world. It was created to stop deadly pathogens like smallpox, polio, and diphtheria. Over the years, it has been very successful in eliminating these types of diseases. But as we have witnessed this past year, the CDC's longstanding, as a trusted and credible institution, was eroded by attacks from those who did not want to believe the CDC's recommendations in regard to this current pandemic. For example, wearing a mask. Well, as it turns out, masks do work to prevent the spread of diseases like COVID-19. But because the facts didn't fit many people's narrative or bias, the recommendation was ignored and disputed for far too long. Or to pass four to five months' think tanks like the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, and the CDC have come out with recommendations that children are safer in school and that children should be placed back in school safely, meaning implementing and applying the mitigation strategies provided by think tanks like the CDC. Currently, the data reported by journals like JAMA have shown that K through 12 in-person schooling shows little evidence that schools contributed to a meaningful spread of COVID-19. The CDC reported that the data from reopened classrooms showed that the type of rapid spread that was frequently observed in congregate living facilities or high-density work sites has not been reported in education settings in schools. This week, federal health officials called for children to return to the classroom as soon as possible, stating the preponderance of available evidence indicates that in-person instruction can be carried out safely as long as mitigation methods are in place. But here we go again. Recommendations provided by our most reputable think tanks and organizations are falling on deaf ears. Several school districts have chosen to dismiss these recommendations, including this one. It is as if trust and belief in science only happens if it confirms someone's bias or fits with a certain narrative. Nobel Prize-winning psychologist Danny Kahneman put it best when he said, "The confidence people have in their beliefs is not a measure of the quality of evidence, but of a coherence of the story that the mind has managed to construct." One of the roles of science is to discover our own ignorance. Science is the best tool we have to find the truth. Science has saved humanity in the past, and it will save us now. The Britannica defines cognitive dissonance as the mental conflict that occurs when beliefs or assumptions are conjugated, I'm sorry, contradicted by new information. It is oftentimes characterized by defensive maneuvers like rejecting new information.
Could you finish in about 30 seconds, please?
Or trying to explain away new information or simply avoiding the new information altogether. To quote John Maynard Keynes, "When the facts change, I change my mind." Without mounting, with mounting evidence to the contrary of your positions and with the validity of the matrix in question, I ask, isn't it time to capitulate? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rigoni. Number 27, Anita.
Good evening. My name is Anita Geller-Rigoni. I live at 4556 Belle Haven Lane. I'd like to talk about returning to five-day-a-week learning model. So three months ago now, I sat here and asked for the same request. And I asked the same request today to base your decisions not on personal fears or personal biases, but based on the evidence, which we now have more of. As nonpartisan elected representatives of our school district, you're obligated to make these decisions that are educated, evidence-based, and not based on your own personal bias. Yet again, I feel the majority still had continued to make that decision after Monday's meeting. I'm trying to understand why you are not following the guidelines of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, who clearly say multiple times it's safe for our children to return. I'm trying to understand exactly how many schools need to demonstrate that it's safe to return and including larger school districts before you realize it's safe for our children in the Oshkosh area school district to return to school. There's been multiple studies published. The most recent one, 100,000 children, Duke University, only 32 children were found to have passed within the district, and none of these were demonstrated child-to-teacher passing of COVID. And half of those 32 cases were in classes where the children were not masked. In that district, 4K did not need to mask. The matrix, I don't understand it. I don't know that anybody does. I understand it now because I looked at the numbers. And if you look at the numbers, you realize that in October, we have 1,000 cases per 100,000 in the Oshkosh area school district. The last report was 300. That's a third. And still, you didn't want to send our kids back to school. Based on your current matrix, it needs to be 100 or less cases per 100,000, which equates to 70 or less in the whole city of Oshkosh. Parents need to understand that based on this, we will not go back to school this school year. Maybe not for years. I have no idea. Depends how many people get vaccinated and when they vaccinate. This reality has not been fully explained to our parents and to our children, who continue to have hopes of returning back to school. Listening to the meeting on Monday, I just don't understand why there aren't different discussions being had. How do we plan on catching our children up? And how do we plan on quantifying the academic losses? And how do we plan on monetarily recovering the almost 500 children that have left our school district? These are the discussions we need to be having. Again, I ask, three months later, if you could please make your decision based on all of the clinical evidence and in the best interest of our children, not based on personal fears or biases. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Anita. And number 28, James.
James Warren, 1285 Wheatfield Way, Oshkosh. Just want to thank everyone for your time. Those 27 people before me, right? I just want to commend them for stepping up and sharing their opinions on how they feel. Even if I don't completely feel the same way. Obviously, it takes a lot of courage for people to get up and speak their opinion. And as a fifth-grade teacher for many years, that's what I teach my students every day, is to speak up for what you believe in. And so I do appreciate everyone that is here to speak. Oh, I forgot, sorry. Speaking on behalf of the Oshkosh Education Association. So thank you for that. Of course, teachers, staff, central administration, the board, of course, we want nothing more than to have students in person five days a week. Of course, I hope after this board meeting, we can take out of this, we can remember what the enemy is here. Of course, it's the virus, okay? So just keep that in mind. This is, this is nobody's plan and nobody is purposely keeping kids out of school. So obviously, just keep that in mind. And of course, the only way we're gonna get through this is by working together. So that is the only way we're going to do this. If we go back to Monday night, we summarized that night, it kind of seemed like we were on schedule to open up or to get rid of the matrix, what was it, February 25th or something like that, that was voted on. And then, you know, things got a little rocky at the end, a little confusion here and there, which of course, we all make mistakes. It's not a big deal. The good thing is, it's only two days later, so that's good news. But yeah, so of course, we, staff, of course, all of us, we want, we trust you. We want, of course, for you to do what's best for staff and of course, the safety of all our students and families. And of course, we trust what your decision is moving forward. We want to do that together. So thank you.
James, thank you. James was the last speaker tonight in the agenda-related public forum. I'm sorry?
We have none for the next one.
Okay. This was signed, these were, people were signed up on the agenda-related, so I'm assuming there were none on the non-agenda, okay. All right, with that, we will work on, work, I'm sorry, we will move on to workshop number one, Strategic Plan Overview and Review of Goal Number One and Priority Areas 1, 2, and 4 with Ms. Conrad and Dr. Brown. And thank you, Mr. Jones, for your assistance there with the.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Julie Conrad, the Director of Curriculum and Assessment.
And Kim Brown, Director of Learning.
Together, we oversee our CIA, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department. Tonight, we're here to talk about and give our first update on Strategic Plan 3.0. And we are going to specifically talk about our update on Goal One, Priority Areas 1, 2, and 4. And our Strategic Plan 3.0 is where we are today, 2019 to 2024.
So the different goals that we have in this strategic plan, the first one, as you all know, is improving student learning for all to ensure college, career, and community-ready graduates. Goal Two is operational efficiency. Goal Three is dedicated in high-performing team members. Goal Four is safe learning and working environment. And Goal Five is to sustain and strengthen our community engagement.
Goal Area Number One is one of our main areas that Kim and I oversee within the Oshkosh area school district. So in the Strategic Plan 3.0, there is the plan duration and there is design element to this. The plan goes from the 2019-20 school year through the 2023-24 school year. So we are really looking at from the fall of 2019 to the spring of 2024. The administration prioritizes, and we do our work based upon the strategic plan. COVID-19 and the pandemic has made us accelerated some aspects of our strategic plan as well as decreased the speed in which we were completing tasks within the strategic plan. And so the good news is, is that how the strategic plan is laid out with goals, priorities, and tasks, we were able to throttle up or throttle down and adjust our different task areas. So once again, revisions have been made, and we have been doing that. You will note that when we talk about the strategic plan, the strategic plan, the goals and the priorities are on our school district website. You can go in and search the strategic plan. Currently, we are updating our task completions and our subtasks because once again, the pandemic and the lessons we have learned from COVID-19 have accelerated some of our tasks, add tasks, but also have decelerated some of the completion of our tasks. You will notice that when we start to go through, and we are going to have a pattern when we give you a strategic plan update, that we will talk through completion estimates, and we will have color codes to tell you where we are within those percentage completions. And in addition to this, one of our new focus and what the board has asked of us as an administrative team and as a school district, is to really look at outcomes. How do we know that we are making progress within our strategic plan? And so a phrase that we often use when it comes to learning and to classrooms is what is the observable impact when it comes to our strategic plan? In the business world, we often call those KPI or Key Progress Indicators. So when we talk about the task completion and the percentages that we will in just a few minutes, we are doing this based on how far have we gotten in our timeline and how far have we gotten on our completion. And you can see up there that we're using percent complete to be able to gauge where we are within our task. So think of it as like the fuel tank on a car and telling you where we are towards task completion. So as we're talking about observable impact or how a measure, if you have done board workshops with me before, we have looked at levels of metrics. And so in an observable impact, and when we're specifically talking about our strategic plan, when we are talking about teaching and learning and measuring how students are progressing in the Oshkosh area school district, we have several levels of metrics. But first, we're gonna look at what is that Level One or the overall progress and completion of things within the strategic plan? That's Level One. Very high, doesn't give you, gives you a big overview, but does not give you details. Then going into Level Two, and we'll give you examples of that tonight, is High Level District Measured Results. And then Level Three is your Detailed District Measured Results by Cohort. So in the board workshop that we did in November when we were talking about data accountability, those were Level Three-type metrics that we were reporting out on. Then you're gonna notice the color change, and I'll talk about why the color changed. Then in the observable impact, we are looking at our schools and school-wide data on how we are doing. Level Five is looking at classrooms, grade level, and course data. And then Level Six is individual student data, which the board is not, the board is not going to see. But we work with teachers and we work with students all the time on those levels. So as we take a look at this, when we're looking at metrics and we're looking at levels, Levels One, Two, and Three is where our board and community is, we are going to be reporting out on data when it comes to the strategic plan and in data-wide accountability. But please know that Levels Four, Five, and Six, we are working with our families. We are working with students. We are working with staff. And we are using that data in order to help inform like next moves in instruction, improvements in curriculum planning, understanding where we are, where we are moving in our district with strategies at the classroom, school, grade level, course level. In addition to that, our strategic plan gets us pulling in the same direction. And so today, we are talking about district-wide indicators and the completion rates under these goals. But embedded underneath there, we're giving you a very high level, Level One, Level Two, possibly Level Three metrics. But no, behind every single one of them is student growth data. Data and information is fed into that from the classroom level, et cetera. But one of our key things as Kim and I are working with our principals, when we're working with our instructional support teams, when we are working with our teachers, we are ensuring that all of our movement is aligned and that our district-wide indicators really do feed in and tell us more about how we are moving, how we are growing as schools, as a district, and that individual child.
Okay, and so as we look at Goal One, just going to review pieces of it. So overall, we have a 39% completion rate in that. If you look at Priority One, or Goal One, Priority One Narrow Opportunity Gaps, out of all the goals, tasks, and subtasks, we have completed 41% of that work. And so you can see Goal One, Priority Two, or yeah, Goal One, Priority Two is Provide Professional Development. We're at 27%. A lot of that work is coming in the next couple of years, and it's around some of our equity efforts as well. And then Priority Four is Accelerate Student Learning and Performance Growth. And we're at a 24% completion rate out of all of those tasks so far.
So you'll also notice that Priority Area Three and Priority Area Five is in gray right now because our next, our next strategic plan update and with metrics, we will be reporting out on those priority areas.
We felt that we were going to give you a lot of information today on these three and that we wanted to make sure it was in sizable bites.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
And so, once again, when we're starting to look at completion rate, that means from, from the beginning all the way to the end of our, this strategic plan 3.0, which is the spring of 2024, that means 41% of the tasks have been complete. So, once again, think of it as that gas gauge of where we, of where we are. So, Kim?
Yeah, so we're going to take a look at those three priorities and the accomplishments we have there. And so, the first part is under Narrow Opportunity Gaps. As you know, we've been doing some work in the equity area. We did use Hanover to do a district-wide equity audit. And so, that information was shared, and then that information was shared out with our principals, and that is going to be some key work that some have started, like they have all started on the work, and they will be sharing that out with staff towards the spring of this year. The district-wide equity non-negotiables is something that was created. The central office team created some non-negotiables that was shared with all the principals. The principals gave feedback, and so, we tweaked all of that, and then we gave that back to the principals, and now they are doing that same work with their staff. And then, they will share that back with us. And then, it will be tweaked one more time, and then we will share that with the board so that we are all moving in the same direction of what our non-negotiables are for equity. And then, there's the Academic and Career Planning Audit that also was completed. And I don't know if you want to say more about that?
Sure, absolutely. So, as a school district, we are required in grades six through 12 to provide academic and career planning. In other words, ensuring that all students are college, career, and community-ready. We started our, rolling out our academic and career planning pieces in 2017. And so, one of the things was, is that are we being effective in our academic and career planning? We found out that at the middle school level, we're, we're doing a great job. We need to be making some changes, and we have made some changes and done the audit and put those changes into place at the high school level. The pandemic has interrupted some of those changes, and we need to get back on track with that. But that audit, which was one of the tasks within there, has been completed, and we know where we need to move next with academic and career planning.
All right. And then, under the Provide Professional Development to Support All Students, we did complete the Co-Plan to Co-Serve Training to the Equity Leadership Team. So, our principals have a key group of people that have been part of their Equity Leadership Team, and so, they participated in that two-day training this summer. They will be using that to help guide their staff this next year in the whole Co-Plan to Co-Serve model. So, that you will be hearing more about next year. As we continue to, like this year, we are continuing in Cornerstone One. Next year, there'll be some review of that and then moving into this work. We also continued, as we said, the Cornerstone One. The pieces that we've done is we reviewed the history of marginalization and asset language, which is really key to the work that we need to be completing. And when I say completing, it's really work that we are going to be continuing probably through the rest of our careers because this is really important pieces that we are all monitoring ourselves and learning more about ourselves as we go through this work. We are working on identity development, the equity research, the equity non-negotiables, and the equity audit. So, by the, by the end of this year, those are the key pieces that all staff will have gone through as a building. The Standard-Based Learning Reboot is another piece that we started last year, and we are continuing this year. Departments had created some unit frameworks, and this year, they are continuing the unit frameworks by working on their essential standards and unit frameworks. And that's at that secondary level that that focused work is going on. And then, the secondary staff, we're all trained and are utilizing Canvas. And as you know, we're, we have a pilot this year for the elementary Canvas and looking to, you know, if, if that's the tool, then we will be doing the professional development this year and next, in the summer to complete that. Did you want to say?
Yep. The training and the utilization of Canvas was one of those areas that was accelerated during this strategic plan as we went into that because Canvas is our learning, our universal learning management system.
There's another area that has been accelerated. Expanding the OESDE Academy to accommodate 100% full-time virtual students in grades K-12. That definitely was fast-forwarded this year. Expanding the 100% virtual learning to 4K via the Ashkosh Online Early Learning, that I would say was almost a surprise. And then, of course, moving to Canvas as a grade book of record for grades six through 12. And, you know, of course, you've heard from parents and families the past few years that that was really important, that we had one.
So, as we were going through this, we said part of this presentation would be also talking about the observable impact. And so, for Priority Areas One, Two, and Four, observable impact is going to have a data source that comes from it. So, where are we getting these observations from? So, for Priority Area One, when we're talking about narrowing the opportunity gaps, we are going to be relying on school report cards. But we do know that this year, school report cards were put on hold.
You mean the one from the state?
Yeah, the one from, yes, you got it, yes. School, not, yes. School report cards, like the ones the district gets and each school gets that has data, information that allows us to look at and compare ourselves across the state of Wisconsin, across the state of Wisconsin and within the district. Equity Scorecard is a new data source that I'm going to share with you. And then, graduation rate, because graduation rate is a key piece about if we are narrowing our opportunity gaps, if we are really addressing that, we should see that. Provide Professional Development, once again, looking at our school report cards, looking at our Equity Scorecard, and then Accelerating Student Learning, Performance, and Growth, our key indicators, our observable impact, is we're going to be looking at the school report card, third-grade reading, eighth-grade math, and graduation rate. So, let's go into more details about each of those. So, for Priority Areas One, Two, and Four, we, and we are going to show you an example of this. We are looking for a shift in our Equity Scorecard. And what we mean by that, that observable shift, is we want to see that we are, all of our students are proportionally represented across our programs, that they are represented when it comes to, when it comes to learning, when it comes to achievement, and when it comes to opportunities. So, we want to see a shift within that scorecard, and I'll show you what that shift looks like. We want to, the observable impact is we want to see an increased graduation rate. We want all students enrolled, employed, or enlisted upon graduation so that they have a plan, and they have a parallel plan, they have a backup plan. We have, we know where they're, they know where they're going, and they feel competent and confident in that college, career, and community-ready. An increase a percent of students proficient in reading at grade three, as that is a key indicator, a key point, and then increase the percent of students proficient in math at grade eight. So, from there, we established baseline and targets. But let's talk about the Equity Scorecard. My hope had been, because there is a lot of number crunching and data behind this, and we are partnering with Hanover Research to help us put together, the Equity Scorecard was to have our actual Ashkosh Area School District Equity Scorecard ready to go. It's not ready yet, but it's coming soon. And as soon as it's ready, I would be, I would be thrilled to present that to you and talk through what that Equity Scorecard looks like. But as you can see right there, what we're going to have is we are going to have different key areas, and we're going to be having from underrepresented to overrepresented, looking at some of our key, key subgroups, looking at some of our students' demographics and identity across that. So, academic outcomes, behavioral outcomes, like their program participation, et cetera. And so, this is going to be a real quick way for us to see how are we shifting in the way that our students are represented in each of those areas. So, that is going to be coming soon, and we'll get that, we'll get that out as soon as that is ready. I was actually hoping to have it ready for, it was going to be ready for this presentation, and it wasn't. So, I was a little disappointed, but we'll get there. So, the next one for observable impact is our four-year Ashkosh Area School District Graduation Rate. And so, as you can see up there, we have colored lines for all students. We are looking at students that economically disadvantaged, students of color. SWD is Students with Disability. And the black line up there, that's target, is where we want to be. So, our target for your graduation rate that we would like to be at by the time we hit the spring of 2024 is we are shooting for 95%. Currently, our graduation rate for the class of 2019, which would be our baseline, but up here is also the trend from past graduating classes, is all students is at 91.8%. We want to hit that target of 95. And you can see up there, our baseline is currently economically disadvantaged is 84%. Students of color is at 86%, and Students with Disabilities is at 77.2. We're going to work on tweaking the Students with Disabilities because keep in mind that some of our students with disabilities, we keep, we keep working with them, and their actual graduation date, we look at four years, but they may be graduating at year five or maybe graduating at year six. But when we officially do the dipstick, it's at the four, you know, we are officially doing it at the four-year mark. So, our target is 95%. So, you have seen this chart before when we are looking at post-secondary enrollment trends. So, if we use two, class of 2019 as our baseline, our post-secondary enrollment is at 55% of our graduating class, and that's the first fall after graduation. It does go up after that, but the first fall after graduation, we are currently at 55%. We would like that target, we would like to be at 65% is where we are looking for at that. And that comes through academic and career planning and other pieces in place. So, that's why the Academic and Career Planning Audit. So, another observable backing key is you have seen this slide before because the question is asked, how many third graders are proficient readers? And so, you saw this data, you saw this slide in November when we did that presentation. And so, remember with the Forward Exam, which is our state assessment, we're looking at English Language Arts. And so, in 2018-19, and actually, the spring 2019 was the last time that we did state assessments. We will not, we do not have state assessment data from the spring of 2020, right? Because we were in safer-at-home, then it was waived. Right now, we got, we got an email and correspondence from Deputy Superintendent, State Superintendent Mike Thompson. We absolutely are having state testing in the state of Wisconsin this spring. So, we are planning for it. We are moving forward with it and in getting ready for the ACT, ACT Aspire Forward Exam and Dynamic Learning Maps for our students, our Alternative Assessment for Students with Disabilities. So, then, where we wanted to go from there is of our OESD elementary students that scored proficient or proficient or advanced, we were at 34.7% for all elementary students, to give you an idea where we were with basic. And then, also taking a look at another reading assessment, which was our developmental reading assessment and some other pieces to that. Because keeping in mind, English Language Arts and state assessments does not kick out or state specifically about reading. So, then, let's dig deeper into that. So, that's where we have been utilizing across which, across the district and actually other districts within our region and in the state, and it's also national, use I-Ready Diagnostic Assessments. And so, once again, this, it's been challenging because our data sets are incomplete, right? So, but at least we can get started and say where, where our students currently at. So, for our third graders last fall, you can see where they were, 39% were at grade level. In the winter, they, 57%, and then, once again, we were safer-at-home. And at that time, I-Ready in our assessment systems hadn't been set up that you could possibly do it from home. And so, we weren't set up, nothing was set up remotely, and everything shifted, right? And so, for this year's current third graders for the fall of 2020, 35% were at grade level. And currently, our winter assessment, we are currently in progress right now, taking a look at that. So, we do not have the data set complete for third graders at this moment. So, putting this all together, what is our target and where is our baseline? So, if you start to take a look at this, if our baseline for Forward Exam is spring 2019, we are shooting for a target of 45% when that comes to an increase. And then, for I-Ready Reading Percent Proficient in Advance, we don't have that 2019 baseline, but taking a look at numbers from sister districts who were very, that were really willing to work with us to take a look at like where they have been, and they have their data over time, helped us establish that. And so, we feel like, we feel like we can hit a target of 60% by the time that we hit 2024. So, that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for. So, then, eighth-grade math is another key indicator piece. And so, within the Wisconsin Forward Exam, the last time we took that in 2019, we had 25.6% eighth graders were proficient at that time. I-Ready Diagnostic, that same spring of 2019, we had 44.5% were at grade level. We had been using I-Ready for the middle school. We started with middle school and then went to elementary. So, if we take a look at this, our data set's a little bit more complete here. So, we can see 26, 34, and then, this fall, for our current eighth graders, we were at 25%. I also do want to let you know, like we said, we worked with sister districts with us that also do I-Ready. Those percentages are pretty commensurate or pretty similar where they're starting math and I-Ready, and the cut scores with that are pretty, are pretty high. I just wanted to give you some pieces with that. And so, with Forward Exam, we are looking for a target of 45%. And so, then, when you look at the I-Ready pieces, we're trying, we are going to go for a target of 60%. I want to point out, though, in all of these, these are all attainment goals when you start talking about a target. And attainment goals don't take into account where a child has started, where a classroom has started. And so, when you take, so we, yes, we want to know, did we, did we cross the finish line? Did we hit the bar? Did we hit the target? But more importantly in all of this, and this was back on our data indicators, is we really need to be talking about growth. And that is one thing, and when we talk, when we start talking about our metrics in Levels Four, Five, and Six, we are looking for growth because it's when every child is growing, when every classroom is growing, that we are going to see movement towards the target. But it's the growth that we really want to be measuring. It's the building on strengths, it's the asset-based language, it's growth that our equity work is going to push. And in our school, in our school report cards, when they come out next, one of the key indicator areas is growth. And that's one thing that our school district, over time, has been very strong at. Just this afternoon, Kim and I were working with our reading coordinators as far as looking at, at data and saying, where, where have we started with groups of students? And starting to analyze that of what is our next moves when it comes to making sure that all of our students are growing. And we're looking at that growth data. It doesn't fit really well in a dashboard to look at growth data, so we shift to targets. But behind every target, we have to grow in order to get there. So, with that, that is Priority Area One, Two, and Four for Goal Number One for our strategic plan. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? I'd like to go back to Slide 18, please.
Sure. It's making, it'll take a second here, so go ahead. There we go.
Thank you. I'm just curious, with the, the percentages there, especially the first two, the one on the 2018-19 Forward Exam.
Yep.
Does that 34.7%? What is, what is?
Thirty, 34.7% is in elementary school, grades three, four, and five take the Forward Exam. So, if we put together all elementary students, grades three, four, and five for the two, for the spring 2019 Forward Exam assessment, 34.7% of them were proficient or advanced, 36.6% were basic.
Do we have data going back previous years? I know you have charts succeeding that, that number 18, looking forward into 2021, 22, 23.
Yep.
So, my, my, I think my question on number 18 is, where do those 31.5% and 34.7% compare with prior years? Are they on target? Do they indicate an increase? You said we're good at growth, showing growth over time. So, I'm just wondering.
Yep.
Where these numbers are relative to maybe the previous three, four years? If they had some trend lines?
Abs, absolutely. So, in our, in our November Board Report with Data and Accountability, we provide, we normally provide trends, and you can, you can recall like the graphs, the lines, all the different pieces broken up and disaggregated. This year, we didn't have that, right? Because we didn't have a spring 2020 assessment. So, each time that we come back to you as a board, we bring forward those numbers in November, and then normally in December, then we go through and we do a deeper November, and then normally in December, then we go through and we do a deeper dive into school report cards. So the trend has been either like stat, like we've been flat or maybe slightly declining in elementary ELA with our forward exam. If you also remember, I believe it was the thirteen, fourteen school year, where I remember they adjusted the cut scores, and then we went into the, the forward exam.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments on the report?
I, I have a question, sorry. Do we know that the forward exam is going to be administered this year? We know it was last year, but it isn't today.
Right. Yep. We, I, I just got, as the district assessment coordinator, I got another update today saying, prepare, prepare, we are going to be administering state assessments in person, all of them.
I think the challenge will be, you know, it has to be in person, and so getting all kids to come in, that includes our pre-attempting student.
Correct.
And I know there's usually, is it a two-week window, right? For when you're from starter minute to test, and we have to get all the students in.
Actually, our window goes through the end of March, all the way to May fourteenth. So the state of Wisconsin has extended the window two weeks for each of the different state assessments to help us accommodate that. But it is, it is going to be a challenge to, to get it, to get it done. Yes, but we will, we'll rise to the challenge.
Thank you. I know that wasn't directly related to this, but I do also.
No, it is.
It is. Thank you.
It's very related.
It is related. I mean, it's not like part of their data. It wasn't on their slide. I, so I have a question specific to this slide.
Sure.
And I know I brought this up before, and I'm still just trying to understand it. I always see a disconnect between our DRA scores and our forward exam scores. And I feel like if I were a teacher, I would feel frustrated that the DRA data is telling me my students are good meeting benchmark, and then the forward exam data is telling me that they didn't.
That is an awesome question, because that is, that is asked a lot. Because a lot of times, state assessments that are measuring English Language Arts, which is reading, writing, speaking, and listening, so it's all the subsets of those pieces are all wrapped up into one score. And so the developmental reading assessment, eye-ready, all of those, Aphonis and Pennell, Fast, Fast Bridge Reading Screener that we use at the high school level, those are specific to reading. And so it's measuring a very specific subset of skills. And so when you're taking a look at the, the DRA, if you're taking a look at the levels of metrics, a teacher is using that data as individual student data to say, what is going to be my next instructional move? And how am I going to be working with my classroom on, on level five? Because it's specific to reading. But it also gives us a key indicator, because when you start to bundle up all the things within English Language Arts, it gives you like a holistic score, but it doesn't give you those pinpointed pieces that you want to know about a child or maybe about your classroom. So that's why we're using different assessments, you use different data sets, because you need it for different purposes.
That's right. And I know that that's how you explained it in the past, and I do understand, besides the same thing as a teacher, I use specific vocabulary appointments to pinpoint that, and then literacy ones to pinpoint that.
Yep.
But, and maybe our teachers don't feel frustrated by this, but I always felt like the data aligned with the results that I received at the end for this state assessment. And maybe, I mean, I, I didn't teach elementary students in Wisconsin, so I can't speak for whether or not our students are, sorry, our teachers are a little frustrated by that, but I just know that that would frustrate me. That's not a question, that's just a statement.
Any other comments or questions? I want to thank you for the equity of all of you central, leading the charge, and principals at the building levels, leading the charge on equity. We, we've talked a lot about, at this board table, about all means all. And to me, it really is evident in this scorecard that we are looking at subgroups, and we do truly care about all of the students, no matter what subgroup or underrepresented group they may represent, because I think all of us recognize every child is important, every child is important. And to me, these data are really clearly pointing that out. So I, I really appreciate that particular slide in the slide deck. So thank you. Anyone else, Mrs. Solaji?
Sorry, I'm going to ask one more question, because I'm trying to think, that would frustrate me, how could, you know, solution-oriented. Does the forward exam results break down that students were, does the forward exam results break down, students were basic with? Would you say it assess, it assesses writing, reading?
Right. It, it breaks it down into, to different domains.
Yeah.
Like big domains, but once again, it does not get to a specific reading skill.
Skill, yeah.
Like the skill of reading, it's still bundled up.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, ladies. I think this, I don't know the name of the, or the number of the specific board policy, but I do know we have a board policy related to looking at updates and reviewing data on the components of the strategic plan. So I really, really appreciate this, and we'll look forward to the next installment. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So moving on with the rest of our agenda, we are at the point of the consent resolution agenda. With the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, I will be, I will, I would like to pull Resolution twelve B, retirement, so I'll read the rest. The board will consider approval of one, minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty special board meeting, two minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty regular board meeting, number three, minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty regular board meeting executive session, number four, minutes of January sixth, two thousand twenty-one special board meeting executive session, number five, minutes of January sixth, two thousand twenty-one special board meeting, number six, minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular board meeting, number seven, minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular board meeting executive session, number eight, minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty special board meeting, number nine, minutes of January twentieth, I think these last two should, these should be two thousand twenty-one, shouldn't they, for eight, nine, and ten?
Yes, please.
Okay, so nine is minutes of January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one special board meeting, city meeting of, city, I'm sorry, joint meeting of city council and board, and ten minutes of January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one special board meeting executive session, eleven bills payable, twelve personnel appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salaries, twelve C, administrator contract renewals, thirteen, two thousand twenty-one summer school program plan, fourteen, two thousand twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two open enrollment space availability, fifteen, tentative agreement including base wage increase of one point five percent for Ashkosh Education Association, OEA, for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, sixteen, twenty, excuse me, tentative agreement including base wage increase of one and a half percent for Ashkosh Paraprofessional Association, or OPEA, for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, seventeen, tentative agreement including base wage increase of one and a half percent for Non Teaching Employees Association, NTEA, for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, eighteen, base wage increase of one and a half percent for food service employees for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, nineteen, base wage increase of one and a half percent for International Alliance of Theatrical Stagehands Employees, IATESE, also known as YAT, YATZI, for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, number twenty, base wage increase of one and a half percent for administrator and general exempt slash non-exempt compensation for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-one, base wage increase of one and a half percent for extracurricular employees for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, number twenty-two, IT physical security and communication specialist position, twenty-three, addition of project manager duties into the director of buildings and grounds position, and the addition of a maintenance supervisor position, and number twenty-four, assistant controller position. So moved. Please call the roll.
Hursa?
Yes, aye.
Olstead?
Aye.
Hushel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution twelve B, be it resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirement as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. I had asked that this be pulled. Once again, we have an opportunity to recognize a longstanding and dedicated staff member who's going on to another age and stage of life, and I just want to recognize Donna Cruz, who is retiring from South Park Middle School as a forty-one-week clerical school secretary. Donna has been with the district and has served us so well since nineteen ninety-two, serving our students and their families over that period. So we wish Donna all the best. Any other comments regarding this retirement? All right, please call the roll.
Olstead?
Aye.
Hushel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Hursa?
Aye.
Olstead?
Aye.
Ause Habith, resolution carries.
All right, so we're back in five minutes, which would be about eight twenty-six.
... Like us on Facebook at our Ashkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at Ashkosh Media.
Back into open session here, following a very brief recess. And we have two individually considered resolutions. Number twenty-five is approval of resolution awarding the sale of sixty-five million dollars in general obligation, school building, and facility improvement bond series two zero two one. So we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we can discuss.
Dr. Hensock, if it, if, leave your, the board, we do have two representatives tonight in order to provide some supplemental information to the board related to this resolution. Mr. Niematz?
Good evening. We are here to discuss that we closed on the first of three bond offerings that, earlier this morning. This was the sixty-five million dollar bond offering that we had discussed at our last meeting. And I've got Eric Cass with me from PMA, who helped us accomplish this, and he helped us, the pre-referendum of costing out what, what our estimates were. And he's going to go through the sale and then kind of go through how it turned out compared to what we were estimating to the public prior to our referendum passing. So I'll turn it over to Eric.
Thank you and good evening. As he said, my name is Eric Cass, I'm a director of public finance at PMA, and we do a lot of projections and stuff associated with the referendum. And hopefully, it felt good to read that resolution, because it means you had a successful referendum, right? And now the fun part starts, where we can start to update and keep track of what promises were laid out to the community in terms of the financial picture, and you can kind of see some of the construction happening. So over the next couple of minutes, I think there's just three things that I want to highlight in this packet that everybody should have in front of them. Number one, want to just be transparent about the process that we use for selling the sixty-five million. That's a pretty big number, so it's kind of important for you at least to have a flavor of how that kind of rolls together. And actually Drew had the opportunity to sit in on, over the, over the web, to watch the whole process kind of unfold. Talk about the results, which are extremely positive and really good news in terms of what our original pre-referendum projections were. Then finally, update to the current financing plan, because this is sixty-five million of a total hundred and seven. So there's going to be two more phases of that, so we just want to kind of give you a little flavor of what those expectations are over the coming years. First page, which is up there, looks a little weird and not some numbers and times, but this is the actual snippet from Muni Auction, which is the source for how we get bidders. What this really means in a nutshell is twelve bidders is extremely great, and seeing large players in the market such as JP Morgan, Citigroup, and Chase, we don't always see those. We sometimes just get a regional flavor for these bond issues, so a lot of competition yield, yield great results. You'll also see the number of bids, so this is a, a process where people can improve their bids until it closes. And so you'll see that some bid more than once. The winning bidder, actually JP, or Morgan Stanley bid three times to the final interest cost, which is that one point six eight, five eight. One small piece of interest, because I'm a numbers nerd, is you have to get out to the fourth decimal to see who actually won the bid. So extremely tight competition, which always helps drive that down. Get to the bottom left of the total interest costs, and just a little highlight there of the total interest associated with sixty-five million repaid over the next twenty years is a little bit short of fifteen million. And we'll compare that to what we had looked at pre-referendum here in a minute. On the second page, kind of bringing together the results, so again, as Drew alluded to, this is sixty-five of the hundred and seven million. This is the first phase of the referendum financing, and we'll show you what the next two phases look like today. This is going to, district is going to receive those funds on March first, two thousand twenty-one, so that will be in an account, starting to earn interest on your behalf and, and spent out as projects come due. And the principal maturities will be over the next twenty years, which is pretty standard. We, it's hard to go out past twenty years unless we do interim financings, and we, in this extremely low interest rate environment, we wanted to lock in those fixed rates as soon as possible. These bonds will be callable beginning on March first, two thousand thirty. That's an important date, because at that point in time, the district can so choose to either refinance, prepay without any penalty the remaining principal. So obviously, things change ten years from now, who knows what the finances of the district may look like, but the flexibility will be there at that point in time. The district did go through a rating process with S and P and was awarded double A minus, just to give you a sense of what that means. Triple A is the top, A plus, or sorry, double A plus, double A, and then double A minus. So it's four notches from the top, which is very much in line with where we expected the district to be for this issue. And then getting into the exciting results, again, Morgan Stanley won the bid at the one point six six, but how does that compare, just at the bottom of the page? So the pre-referendum projection for the entire referendum was eighty-five cents at the high watermark, and we'll talk about what this phased-in approach looks like. We're currently at sixty-eight cents, so a drop of seventeen cents here today, with two more financings that we believe we can continue to improve upon, our interest rate projections, hopefully. What that, again, from a total interest standpoint, we had pre-referendum projected at fifty-eight, fifty-five point eight million of total interest for the hundred and seven million. We're already down to thirty-eight six, or a reduction of about seventeen million. A lot of that pre-planning was, you know, pre-pandemic, nobody knew what the economy was going to look like, so we're really taking advantage of historically low interest rate environments. And what you'll see here in a minute is the financing plan certainly changed the dynamic of that. The last page, on the far left, you can see under final, that's sixty-five million. So after hopefully final approval here this evening, those interest rates and principal payments will be locked in. The next phase is expected to happen about a year from now, and that's projected to be twenty-five million. And then the final phase, we're projected to have two years from now, in March to May of two thousand twenty-three. So getting to the far right, you can kind of see those step increases for the mill rates and the total tax levy, where we get to a high watermark of roughly nine point two to nine point three million. Pre-referendum, our assumption was that high watermark would be about ten point two million. So we're beginning to see some drastic reductions, just taking advantage of those low interest rates and the competition that the market has to offer for municipal issuer such as yourself. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
So then really to, to sum this up on what this means to our taxpayers and the community, pre-referendum, we have up there, there is going to be a phased-in approach with forty-eight cent impact for, for referendum debt. Forty-eight's an impact in twenty-one, twenty-two, seventy cents in twenty-two, twenty-three, and the remainder of the issuance would be at eighty-five cents. So again, with of the issuance would be at 85 cents. So again, with the $17 million savings in interest right now with two more issues to go, our new tax impact is 36 cents this next year, 54 cents the year following, and capped at 68 cents for the remainder of the issuance. So we have saved a significant amount of, of interest for the taxpayers here. Again, there is part of the rationale with going for the referendum at the time we were with the savings we were able to lock in, and we were able to lock in at an absolutely outstanding rate. I do have to just say, watching the, the bid auction is, is a crazy event. You get, it, it, it's like an auction on steroids because it, it really is wait until the last, like, minute, and then they extend the time period by this, this like two minutes at a clip or two minutes and 32 seconds, depending on when the last current winner takes place. So it really is kind of a crazy 15-minute process, which I was fortunate to be able to be involved with. So it was pretty exciting. With that, are there any questions from the board on, on what the issue is and what, what it kind of now means for us as it's locked in?
So, Mr. Nehans, I just want to kind of highlight this again. So even though when we were going for referendum with our community, we had advised them that for this, for this, this year, 21, 22, it was going to be a 48 cents tax impact. But at this point in time, the highest it will, will be is 36 cents. And then the following year, we said it would increase to 70 cents, but now we're saying it's going to be 54 cents. And then for the extended period, we said originally it was going to be 85 cents, and now it's 68 cents per $100,000 valuation on property tax, correct?
Correct.
That is correct. I just want to clarify. So the 36 cents, yes. The 54 and the 68 are a little bit volatile because we haven't locked in those financings.
Okay.
But we do believe that versus current market rates, that we are being conservative and hope that we can come back with lower than 54, lower than 68. So we believe that the reset is really in that first year at the 36 cents and should continue to carry. And we believe that we'll even beat these numbers up here. But those 54 and the 68 may change a little bit, hopefully down when we come back a year from now and two years from now to finalize those borrowings.
So from what we were projecting originally as far as interest paid for, long-term for this debt, we're saving approximately $17 million at this point?
Just on the first borrowing. And again, we believe that that'll get up into the 20 millions once we finalize the next two borrowings. That's our projection.
I greatly appreciate it because that was one of the things that we committed to this community and, and our communication, letting them know that by going forward at the time for which we were going for, that it would ultimately save our tax dollars, our taxpayers a lot of finance, a lot of money.
Absolutely.
So this, it seems as though this is coming to fruition.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just, it's good, great news for, for the district. But just curiosity for my own sake, what's the time of the bid process? When is this? Is it like a five, 15-minute window?
Fifteen.
Well, it starts, yeah, but it starts 10 minutes before, and people can start bidding. And then it extends for an additional two minutes if somebody takes the lead. So nobody knows what place they're in, but they can bid as many times as they want, continue to update their bid. So within the last two minutes, if somebody takes over first place, at that point in time, it goes for an additional two minutes. So it can keep going. And we've seen it go almost 10 minutes where bidders are going back and forth on some of these issues. This one extended for about another three, three and a half minutes because we did see some movement at the top. So just to give you some context, the, the winning bidder after about six minutes where people really get serious the last five minutes was at 1.73. And then they started driving each other down for about seven basis points. And quantifying that, that's about $400,000 or $500,000 of interest savings just by that going back and forth versus a static bid where they put in their bid and then hopefully somebody gives you a 1.66. So we feel that competition, especially on an issue for this size, really yields the best results. Probably giving you more than you asked for.
And if you did mention that before, I was probably passing a basket of snacks around.
That sounds exciting. I know it might not, but it does to me. That sounds really, um,
fun.
Yeah, that's, thank you for so, Drew, you look so happy right now. Like I would, I would hope people would see how happy you look right now. So I appreciate that. I really do. Thank you.
This is good news for this community and this school district. And so I'm, I'm really pleased with, really pleased with the results. So thank you to both of you for the hand you had in, in this, or hands you've had in this. Great work. Other comments or questions? All right, then we do need to vote on this individually considered resolution. We've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Solaji?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Holstead?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
The ayes have it, resolution carries.
Thank you very much. We'll get the paperwork signed and then we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
All right, then we have an agenda item that was added yesterday. After reflecting on Monday night and consulting a legal opinion, it was clear that there was confusion at Monday night's meeting over the application of Robert's rules. Therefore, we've added an item to tonight's meeting to reconsider a return to in-person learning. This will require a motion and a second for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we're open for discussion. Yes, please.
Wanted to provide the board with some, some information because I think after listening to the conversation on Monday, want to make sure that you're aware of this. While our principals may have differing personal opinions on the transitioning to five days a week, what we want to make sure that you understand that they and central office administrators are unified in stating that we can make the transition to an in-person five days a week, and we'll use data to make individualized decisions. If a transition to virtual instruction is needed for a classroom, a grade level, or a school due to COVID-19-related quarantines or active cases, we are prepared to do that if the board decides to proceed in that direction. So we did prepare for you a recommendation. It's, it is different than the recommendation from last week. And again, it is based off some of the conversation from the board. The, the recommendation that we are giving to you as an administrative team unified is be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve option three, authorizing district administration to move beyond the previously approved Oshkosh Area School District instructional models matrix and transition to model two, modified in-person learning effective Thursday, February 18th, 2021 for students in grades pre-K through eight, and Thursday, February 25th, 2021 for students in grades nine through 12. The difference in the dates for high school is because high school continues to have high numbers at both of the sites with the students. Therefore, we would like to have a delayed start for our high school. And again, continuing to monitor that data on an individual school basis all the way down to a classroom, grade level, or school.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Any other comments? Mrs. Solaji?
I just want to publicly apologize for my role in the confusion that happened on Monday night and say that I also woke up, well, Monday night, as I was trying to fall asleep, reviewed what happened, woke up Tuesday, did the same thing that you did, called for legal advice to figure out how I could remediate the problem that I was a part of. And I just feel that I should publicly apologize for that. And I also want to thank you, both of you, Dr. Herzog and Dr. Cartwright, for bringing this forward again. Thank, because that was the legal advice that I got, was to bring it forward again. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solaji. And I too have to apologize for my, anything that I contributed to that confusion since that, that night. I've done a lot of reflection. And I've done some, I don't know if I'd call it research, but I have looked into how I can improve my work with Robert's rules. And I feel more comfortable and confident moving forward that I can do a better job than I did on Monday night. So thank you. Other comments or questions?
At the end of this resolution, do we have to put in?
Yes, as, as approved by the Secretary to the Board of Education.
As filed.
Thank you.
As filed with the Secretary. Excuse me.
Yep.
We will add that in right this moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also want to publicly thank all of the people who have reached out to the board, sharing emails, phone calls. And again, I apologize because I have not responded to each one as I would like to, to do. However, I found every one of them to be helpful. And there were some things that struck me, as probably struck some of you in, in the reading of those. One thing that, that really struck me was that we're hurting students academically, socially, and emotionally. And it was extraordinary helpful, helpful to me to see the, the recent CDC updates and the one from the American, I think it's American Academy of Pediatricians. I had related to you a week ago that I had talked with a physician in the valley whose, whose school district is and has been five-day-a-week in person. They've done very well with that. That isn't to say that there, there haven't been bumps in the road. But putting those things together and comments from individuals and my little friend Griffin, an eight-year-old who tells me how important it is for him to be in school every day, those have all, those have all been important. One of the things that we, that came up in last Monday's meeting, it was phrased in different ways, but what is best for kids? And we talk about students first being our guiding principle. And I thought about, I've thought about that a lot. I'm, I'm convinced that the best way that we can meet the needs of our students academically, socially, and emotionally is in our classrooms. I'm not saying that's easy. We've heard from a lot of teachers who have concerns. But we also heard on Monday night that there are ways for them to, to receive accommodations if being in the classroom full-time is not going to work for them. I, I shouldn't say teachers, all staff members. And the same with students who for health reasons or other reasons can't, can't do that at this time. We've also, we also heard on Monday that attempts have been made to increase our subpool and to increase the number of contact tracers. That's all very important. We've also heard that, one of the things that we, that we probably need to, to take a look at, although it, the plans have been there, but provisions for students who may be quarantined and may, may not be able to be physically in our classrooms. But I just, I feel like it's time, it's time for us to get our kids back in our schools. I'm confident in our central administration for the work they've done for these many months in the background that sometimes has gone unnoticed perhaps. And I'm especially pleased to hear that our principals are ready to go and that they've prepared their staffs to move in this direction. And for the staff who are going to, to be working with these students. We know that there are a lot of COVID-19 mitigation steps that have been implemented. The ones that seem to be rising to the top, at least the ones from the emails and so on that I've been seeing, have to do with the hand washing and sanitizing and properly wearing masks. And I just, we have to get our kids back in school. Mr. Heschel?
Sure. I'm not going to disagree with anything that anyone's, because it's, it's all at, right? And I think it's, it's the most well-meaning thing that we can say as, as a board, is to say, you know, that we want our kids back in school because it's, it's absolutely the truth. So I added to the confusion of the other night, partially because I wanted more time for students, staff, and family to be able to prepare. That was the objective of the 25th. So my goal was not to impede the process, but was to create a better time frame. So if my steps towards the amendments and the multiple amendments and, and that distraction led to that misunderstanding of how we move forward, I apologize for that. So my, my concerns still are valid concerns. My, my concerns are vaccinations. My concerns are subpools, contact tracers. My concern is time. And I had them all written down here. There's a lot more. But I, I believe that this allows for some of those things to be worked on. I don't feel that they're going to be solved. I think these are going to be ongoing things. And we're being told, all of us have read the information, we're all being told that educators won't be able to be offered the vaccine until March 1st, minimally, if they're lucky, if everything rolls out the way that it should. Speaking from a mental health perspective, I think it's really encouraging that Dr. Matt, Mr. Camerer, today indicated that social workers, psychologists, and other people who support mental health issues in our district are going to have that. So that should give them, not that it did before, but it should give them the peace of mind to be able to start reaching out a lot more and to feel a lot more safer doing that. I am a little concerned that it is the middle of January and, and, and we're just finding out that that group could have been included in the 1A. So, oh, that's, that's just that. Because I was, I was under the understanding that in the medical systems that all of those persons were, were that. And that's how some of my employers, social workers, were able to get into that pool and get vaccinated and everything. So, so I'm just, it's not a big concern. I'm happy that it's happening. I was just perplexed that, that, that we're just finding out recently that that, that that could take place. So those are my, my general comments. And I still think they're true as they, true as, as true as they were on Monday as they are today. Those are still questions that I think as we move forward, we still need to have continual updates on, about, you know, subpools, contact tracers, the vaccination. If we, you know, I told Dr. Cartwright the other day, she should be working her magic to do whatever she can to get our teachers, staff to be covered by the vaccine as, as quickly as possible. And if it can happen before March 1st, work your magic. So, so with the resolution that's hand, I find something different, even different than what I amended. So I want to, I want to kind of point that out. And, and again, I'm comfortable with the 18th. I'm comfortable with the 25th. What's different between Monday and today is that the initial first day of going back into, it involved pre-K through five. Today, it involves pre-K through eight. And it was for, you know, it was originally then six through 12. So I'd like a little bit of explanation on, on how, how we came, how it was brought about to doing that type of transition for this.
The, the difference on that were a couple of things. As far as the dates are concerned, we had heard that from our secondary administration that they wanted to start on a Thursday. We also heard loud and clear from our, the Oshkosh Education Association that they wanted to start after the 15th. So that is how it was derived for Thursday, a Thursday start on the 18th for, for students in grades four, pre-K through eight. The, when we're taking a look at the number of cases for our high school students, it's still, and the number that are having to quarantine, we're monitoring that closely at this point in time. And even in the hybrid mode, we're having a lot of students that are still having to quarantine. So we're, we're monitoring that one closely. And administration felt much more comfortable and allowing us an additional week in order to monitor that data to make sure that that is the appropriate decision in order to resume in, in person. in order to resume in-person five-day-a-week. And again, to be able to make that applicable by site by each of the high schools. But right now, there is a, there is a level of concern about the number of students and staff having to quarantine at both of the high schools.
Okay, so then is it, is it safe to say that the administration and staff are more comfortable getting the middle school section into starting school earlier than the previous proposal, which was for, I can't remember.
We lumped 6 through 12 together.
Six, 12.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Yep.
So I guess I'm just trying to, that's, I'm looking for that answer, that you're more comfortable lumping middle school in with elementary, pre-K and elementary than you are the high school cohorts right now?
Based on the number of cases and the number of quarantining that we're taking a look at, yes.
Hey, Mrs. Garner?
Okay. So my issue with Monday was partly Robert's Rules, because they were not, I don't know. I didn't, I have the book. I don't think I've ever opened it, obviously. And so it got real, I got real turned around in the meeting. But more than that, when I left Monday, I didn't feel like I knew what we were being advised to do. So when Tony stood up here and said that the role of the board is to vote on something that we've been advised to do, I didn't feel like that was happening. It was backwards. We were being asked to figure out a date. We were being asked to figure out which option we were going to go with. And because that was upside down, I couldn't vote for it, even though I desperately want our children in school, mine included. So, I thought I was on board with this. I've gone below the line. I've tried to understand what our principals and central office want. And the only hiccup I have is I never heard that we were going to separate 6, 7, and 8 from high school and lump them with elementary. So now, I don't know. Because I thought I knew a thing. I thought we were all on the same page. I thought we were all facing the same direction. And now I feel like I don't know again. And I am frustrated.
Mrs. Solaji?
Do you want me to address that?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I would like for our administration team to help me understand why I have been told Monday, Tuesday, and this morning that we were going to do PK through 5 and 6 through 12, and we were going to stagger them and separate them. And that's what everybody was behind. And now we've got this, which is not what I've heard.
The fact that nobody can answer my question is why I cannot vote for these things.
I can answer.
Thank you, Dave.
So, the reason for the shift in basically pulling out the high schools, okay? There's a couple of reasons for that. Remember, the whole point of this is to take us off of a set matrix. Allow us to let the data speak, be more granular, because we know conditions are going to change in an elementary school, in a classroom, et cetera. We also know our elementary schools are different than our high schools. We have a whole lot of kids who are mixing and mingling a whole lot more than they do at the elementary schools. We know that. Some of the data we're seeing is that there is a high burden rate in the high schools right now. It does not exist in pre-K through 8. And that's why we separated them that way.
Are the principals, 6 through 8, on board with this?
Yes.
Boom, thank you very much. That works for me.
Mr. Heschel?
My wife, before I came to this meeting, told me to take a deep breath. And I'm trying to. So, I have to voice a frustration. And maybe it's a clarification of what you just said that can lead me down a path of different discernment. So, did you indicate that you were aware of this prior to coming into the meeting today?
No, what I said was I reached out and went below the line. And I'm owning that right now in this room, okay? Because I cannot, as of Monday of this week, could not understand and get any idea as to whether or not our building principals and our central admin team were on the same page.
Got it, so, got it. I understand what you're saying.
So when I say that I thought PK through 5 and 6 through 12 were going to be together, those were the questions that I was asking. Are you guys cool with this? And that was how it was lumped.
So.
But I did not know this.
So, all right, so thank you for that clarification. And the reason why I asked that question, and Dr. Cartwright will attest to this, I've been trying all day to find out this information. And I've gone to people looking for this information. And so, the reason I was concerned is that if somehow you had this information and it was provided to you, and it wasn't provided to me.
This is the first time I have seen this, yeah.
That's good. I'm just making sure that we're all on the first, on the same page here and that this is the first time that we're seeing this. Because I've talked to none of you, well, except for Dr. Cartwright, about this. And she won't even tell me this information at that point. And that's okay, because of how we're going about making this decision. I get, I get the process that we're doing here. I just was looking for more information, you know? Which I think all of us may have done. So, so thank you for clarifying. Because I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the straight and narrow in making this decision tonight.
Good, thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
Is there any further discussion or any further comments? Should say, are there any further comments? Mrs. Carla?
I was just thinking, Bob, when you just said that, I was thinking, you know, that's what Monday night was, us being transparent. Because we don't have these conversations. And that messy meeting was us kind of, for the first time, really talking about some of this stuff. And we're being 100% transparent. And, you know, this board is a strong board. We've been through a lot together. And when I watched Monday, also known as Trainwreck, I thought, that's not us. We are better than that. But then again, you know, it's a pandemic, we're all learning. I think we should, you know, not be so hard on ourselves, maybe? Because again, we're in uncharted territory. We're all doing the best we can. We all want what is best for kids. And thank you, Dr. Cartwright, for bringing this forward tonight.
Any other comments, questions? I believe we can call the roll.
Carlin?
No.
Evans?
No.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Heschel?
Toughest load of my life.
I'm sorry?
Toughest load of my life, aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Five A's, two no's. The A's have it, resolution carries.
Thank you very much. This has been a tough time. And I think we're putting our students first. But to have our students first, we've got to have the support of our principals and our teachers. And we have to look out for those people. We have to have their backs, so, thank you. This is a, this is a step, step forward for our students. Dr. Cartwright?
I'd just like to thank the board. Again, just a reminder, and the resolution did not come to you previously because it had to be placed back onto the table. And that section had to occur first, prior to a recommendation being made to the board. So I just wanted to at least let the board be aware why that process was different than what we historically have done. And that it was, it was, it was under legal advisement in order to proceed in that direction. And Mr. Heschel, I apologize, I could not answer your question earlier, but it was due to that fact.
I got my question answered. I mean, I figured it out. I spoke to legal counsel, so.
Very good. We all did. Okay, moving on. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
I do.
Mr. Heschel?
And I, and I think it speaks directly to our, to what we just passed. I think, and it's not that I don't think it's going to happen, I just think, I feel like I need to say it publicly, is that, you know, as many constant updates as we can have on the vaccination pool, the system to get more subs in our district and build contact tracers, even the information, how you plan to make those decisions and stuff, communicating that to us in a regular basis, I think is really, is going to be really important to us. Because it builds trust in this, in this path going forward. So that would be my only request, is that, you know, and maybe until we get to that point where we feel like these things are filled up or are being, or coming to fruition, that we just get some, some more continual general updates about those items that are, that are key to the success of our kids being back in school as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Heschel. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Mrs. Solaji?
Can we have a training or a workshop on Robert's Rules?
I think that would be a good idea.
Thank you. And it doesn't, I know we are dealing with a lot of things right now, so it doesn't have to be right now. If it's after the election, that's fine, too. If it's a special meeting where we, I don't know. What I'm trying to say is, I just came off the training and I.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, my vote wouldn't have changed. I knew what I was voting on, my vote wouldn't have changed. But I did think that we'd go back to the original resolution. So that's where mine was at the end there, but I didn't, yeah. So I, I absolutely at the end there was a little confused. So I apologize for, it didn't change my vote, but I was a little confused after that, so.
Mr. Heschel?
Definitely. Sure. It was, actually, I've had conversations about, about that. So my, my thought was that a couple of government bodies could come together.
Oh, sure.
And either do like a virtual training or find a space that has a nice, large opening and, and we could maybe do some type of joint and maybe collaborate on a Robert's Rules of Order kind of workshop.
Sure.
You know? So, yeah, so that's, that was kind of an idea that was suggested to me.
Okay, good.
I like that.
All right. We'll work on that then.
Thank you, Mrs. Solaji.
Anyone else?
I had one more, but I lost it, so.
Okay, well, I do have one announcement. Anyone else has, does anyone else have an announcement?
Yeah, I got a simple one.
Okay, Mr. Evans, we start with you.
I got a call last night from a friend of mine who's also a school board member in Dane County area. And to kind of echo what Stephanie said, it was so nice just being able to talk to them, because they're going through the same thing.
Yeah.
And as everybody knows, we can't talk with each other. But it's nice talking to another board member that was experiencing the same thing. So I encourage all you to try to find a board member in some other district. You can, you can talk.
We need board buddy, board member buddies.
Yeah, board member, yeah. Because my counselor just doesn't understand what I'm talking about.
Mr. Heschel?
Sure. My, it actually relates to, I believe, there was a staff meeting with Mr. Newman today, correct?
That was part of my announcements, yes.
That was, yep. And I'm wondering if that was, if that was recorded.
It was. So, if I may?
Sure.
I just wanted to announce to the board that we did have a very fruitful conversation this afternoon with Dr. Newman from a rural hospital. It took place this afternoon. For anyone who wanted to participate on that, employees from across the district had the opportunity to submit questions that they may have related to the COVID-19 vaccines. And Dr. Newman, we partnered with him. And he was so gracious enough to provide us for about an hour, hour and 10 minutes of his time in order to do a live session and being able to go in and talk about COVID-19 vaccines. And we conclude, and then he quickly got into conversations, not only about the vaccines, but about the risks, about doing in-person instruction, and what does that look like? And how do you mitigate that? And we were very fortunate in finding that a lot of the things that we are, we have planned for and that we are putting into place were directly in alignment with what he was saying as well. That session was recorded. We will be pushing that out to all district staff so that anyone who is unable to attend today's meeting can view it at their own leisure.
Is that something that can be shared with us?
We will make sure that board members have a copy of it.
Okay, thank you.
Other announcements? I just have a very quick one. It's that time of year when we typically do the annual board self-evaluation. It's an online survey.
Should we send it to the public?
Well, eventually, we will be discussing it in open session in a transparent discussion or conversation. It's an online evaluation form. It's probably coming to you via Sherry Wertz. And please, please, finish it quickly so that we can get results back and be able to discuss them in a timely and meaningful manner while we still remember what we filled out on the form, okay? Thank you. Mr. Heschel?
Sorry. Thank you for endearing me tonight. Where are we with the Gallup poll?
I believe that, well, we're not, notice to talk about that, but I believe it's closed. We should be getting results soon.
Yeah, we can't talk about that.
I'll call it an announcement. We should be getting results soon from CISA 6.
All right. I'll talk to you afterwards, because I don't, it's not a big deal.
All right. Any other announcements? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone.